We're good. Everyone set? Everyone good?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, August 27th, 2024. It is just a little past 6:00 P.M. So I will call this meeting of the Berry City Council to order. Council or manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mayor, I have at least one. We're gonna remove Consent Agenda Item A, which is approval of the minutes. This is for the meeting that happened last night. The minutes were just weren't complete. So they'll be ready for approval at the next council meeting.
Got it.
And then I know we have a couple of, or a letter to consider. Thinking about.
Correct. I think we have two, both fairly late submissions. One was one, a request that I received from Chris Cole. I told you about that last night. So we just put that at your plate. Requires no match on the part of the city what it is. Just a letter of support in support of the Gopher program. You know, over the past year, we've, we've heard about the challenges, the public transportation challenges. I think you're all aware of the Gopher program that they partnered with Capstone on. So they're just looking for a letter of support as they seek additional funding. So if there's no objection, council, and I will, by the way, it said XX rides. I don't know how many rides they provided. So I have to get that information from Chris and I will fill that in. But if there's, if there's no objection, I'd like to put that under the consent agenda. I think, as I said, I think it's a program that we all support. They provided rides to folks mainly for medical reasons, folks who have medical appointments and for whom the public transportation schedule simply isn't working. And in their first number of months, they provided those rides free of charge. So I think we all support that. So if there's no objection, I'm gonna insert that. We've re-lettered, obviously, the consent agenda. So that would be Item E under the consent agenda. And the other letter, would you like to lead off on that one?
Yeah.
I just kinda found that at our place as I walked in.
Sure. So we, and this is something that Tess Taylor's been engaged in on the city side. But there are advocates for the unhoused that are working on, on a letter to, a public letter to issue. They're calling for the state to continue the motel program. They cite the number specifically particularly focused on the number of children that are at risk of losing housing at the, as the motel program expires. Because this is a matter of, you know, fairly significant state policy, we thought that the council should weigh in before the city decide. You know, we didn't feel comfortable as a staff making a decision on behalf of the city on this letter. Tess, I don't know if you have anything else to add. I know you've been working with the, with the advocates.
Yeah. So, yeah, this is a representation of a lot of, thank you, of a lot of organizations working together on this. And it was born out of the concern that, it just started with a conversation about, does the general public actually, I mean, I hear and read about, you know, the hotel motel program ending, but is it sinking in? So that's, that's how this started out. But then it really became a plea to the state to reconsider some things. And it's really mostly about the kids, families. Yeah.
And we would simply be adding our signature to the Washington County Housing Coalition?
Yeah, there's a, there's a list of people that I guess have been.
And my understanding is our, our neighbor municipality, Montpelier, they won't be signing on as a municipality just as a, because they, they won't have a council meeting before the letters, the letters due tonight. We're supposed to tell who's signing. But I believe their mayor is signing as an individual because he can do so as an individual. But just so you're, for context of what our sister city's doing.
Any objection to inserting this as Item F on the agenda?
Seems good.
Consent agenda or?
Consent agenda, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a second.
Okay. Then I think we are set with the consent agenda. So council will have, Item A will be the clerk's office. I'm sorry, do we have any licenses or permits?
Absolutely. We have one entertainment permit. It's Slowpoke downtown. They wanna have what they are calling a special venue permit. The D L L is now allowing businesses to serve liquor at special events. And they hope to hold an art show, art exhibit planned for Sunday, September 1st from 6:00 to 10:00 P.M. And they will be serving bottled and canned alcohol. It has been approved by Brad for no concerns with him. And the D L L is just waiting for council to sign off on it.
Okay. Thank you. So we will have that. Yes, ma'am.
Could I ask you a question about that? I was speaking to Maddie, I think, and, from Slowpoke. And a question that she had was what, what is, what makes?
Excuse me for a moment. Herb, I appreciate having you here, but if you could, if you could remain silent while the council is speaking, I'd really appreciate it.
We're trying to get where we can hear you.
Oh, okay.
We can't hear you.
No. I mean, very, very talented.
You hear me?
Quite hard to hear himself.
You know, you know what some people would give to not be able to hear me? So, so count your blessings, Herb. Now, we'll, we'll, the council will speak up, but yeah, it's a little distracting. Thank you, folks.
What, what qualifies as an entertain, what, what do you need to tap to do for enter? Yes, thank you. That's the word.
Actually Nicholas and I were just discussing that today.
Because hanging art on a wall doesn't seem like entertainment to me, so.
I think it's the, the act of inviting a large amount of people and serving alcohol as well.
Okay.
But we're, we're searching ordinances. We're asking questions. What is the, the outline? I mean, for instance, somebody asking me to set up a table in City Hall Park for just general purpose of, you know, providing information, is that considered entertainment? If a large crowd shows up? So we're trying to figure out what exactly. But to cover our bases, we did ask her to apply for an entertainment license.
Right. And she?
It is a question that's been debated before in the council chambers because as we all know, the Constitution guarantees the right to peaceful assembly. We've been really fortunate because most people look at our ordinances. I suspect that if someone initiated a gathering, a peaceful gathering in City Hall Park and they did not get an entertainment permit, there wouldn't be a whole lot we could do about it. Most folks are very kind in terms of letting the city know so that we can let public safety know there'll be a large gathering. So if there are any barricades that need to be put up, we can assist. But it's a really good question because technically, as I said, if somebody wanted to gather a large crowd in City Hall Park, Constitution guarantees that.
I think her concern was that she's paying for a liquor license, a permit, and now she's also paying for an entertainment permit. And I don't think they're expecting that they're going to need, you know, any kind of crowd control or anything of that nature. I think people are just gonna come and look at art and maybe have a glass of wine or a beer or something and that's it. And maybe buy some things from them.
Yep.
So.
Service of alcohol changes things.
Yeah.
It does.
But, but if you're paying for a liquor license, well, it seems to me that if you're not, like, I just, I'm wondering, do the two always go hand in hand?
Well, like, for instance, Josh, if he were to hold an event, a special event, and he already has a liquor license, he would have to sign, he would have to get an entertainment license. If he's catering offsite, he has to get an entertainment license, although he does have a liquor license. So I think it's just the fact you are holding something out of the ordinary and serving alcohol at that event.
Okay. So if they have art just hanging on their walls 365 days out of the year and invite people in, they just have to get a liquor license?
Are they serving liquor?
Well, if they're getting, if they're, if they're inviting people in.
I mean, I'm not.
Well, are they inviting, well, her intent is to serve liquor.
Well, wait, but so my, so my question, I think the part that's confusing is it seems like you can't have one without the other. If you're going to get a liquor license, you're probably going to have to get an entertainment license as well. That's what it sounds like.
Yes.
And then I guess that goes back to what is considered entertainment.
Unless someone really pushed back, and fortunately, folks don't, as I said, most of the time, the notification is just a courtesy to let the city know that there will be a large gathering of people so we can let public safety know and, you know, folks are aware. You know, I, over the years, like I said, this is a debate that we've had three or four times. And I don't wanna call it a debate. It's not a, it's a discussion that we've had three or four times. And I've always questioned whether or not folks would have to get an entertainment permit because, as I said, the Constitution guarantees a right to assembly.
So, and this is, and it sounds like Cheryl and Nicholas are trying to figure out a way to make this more clear for people? For us.
Yeah, I, I'll be candid. I hadn't done anything with an entertainment license since Cheryl came to talk to me today. But we can, I think we can, I think we can clarify the parameters.
Okay.
Yeah.
She indicated she's a former teacher and she said it would be nice if there was a rubric so we could understand what falls in the, it falls in under the guidelines of an entertainment license. So thank you for helping me understand.
Not at all. So I don't believe you have any contracts to execute.
Nope, no contracts this week.
Okay. Manager has no contracts to execute, but we will. You did receive a memorandum. We had our, the manager's evaluation last evening in a special meeting of the, of the city council. And you did receive that memorandum setting the manager's fiscal year 25 salary retroactive to July 1st, 2024, consistent with his contract. Happy to report that the manager exceeded all expectations. I know he was shocked. We were not. But he has said that if we flood a third time in 25, you're done, right? Something like that? No, seriously, council feels that it has been a pleasure working with Nicholas. We like his management Messiah. We like how he leads the city. And just in the interest of disclosure, the council voted unanimously to award a 5% salary increase for the next fiscal year. Errors and omissions, council, you had that memorandum in your packet, very thorough. An additional item, of course, is the letter of support for the Capstone rides, community rides program. And then lastly, 536 Vermont Children's Houses, they go back to school, we'll be adding our support to that as well. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Item 4A, council is to approve the city warrants from the week of August 28th, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. I'm sorry, no abstentions. Thank you very much. Ms. City Clerk?
Hmm. Okay. So this week, we have been really busy collecting the first quarter property taxes. The interim bills were mailed out August 16th with a due date of September 17th. We are also in the process of putting together the ballots and getting the absentee ballots mailed out for the upcoming Berry Unified Union School District budget revote scheduled for the 17th. As well as getting the voter checklist up to date for the state to upload for the general election ballots will, they will be mailing to all registered voters. I do advise you to create an account with my voter page to update your information prior to September 6th is when the state intends on uploading all the information so they can process it for their ballots to be mailed out. In terms of the Berry City Unified School District vote, the last vote, which was held in June 18th, only 15.22% of the registered voters in Berry voted on that ballot. We hope that that number will increase to move the budget forward. The primary elections, that was 14.24% of participation. So we hope that for the upcoming school budget vote and for the general election vote, that people get out, people get their ballots. Some people are having their ballots mailed to them and they're still not voting. We had about 33% of the absentee ballots not returned. So it's just a matter of placing your vote and putting it in the mail or dropping it off. Here at Berry, at the city hall, we have a Dropbox in the front, we have a Dropbox out back. We really hope that you utilize these conveniences for you. And yeah, that's what I am doing and that's what we are doing in our, in our office. So please vote and please get your taxes paid on time.
Thank you very much. Any questions, folks? And I apologize, council, I did not call for Item 3 on the agenda, which is visitor's standing communications. Is there anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Yes, sir. How are you, Mr. Anthony?
I'm well. And yourself, Mr. Mayor?
I'm doing okay.
My name is Peter Anthony. I'm one of the two representatives of the city of Berry. And I asked the administrative assistant of the manager to include a letter that I penned to you about a matter that very recently came to my attention. It is the proposed demolition of a building right adjacent to the city garage in Burnham Meadows. Very tight area, for sure. The request is tendered by Capital Candy, Mr. Burns. And the letter, if I can just summarize very quickly, I attended the August, sorry, yeah, August meeting and asked that they take a deep breath and see if there wasn't a way to salvage the structure. The reverse of my communication includes a letter from the Division of Historic Preservation of the State of Vermont recounting, if you will, the history of the structure, the fact that it actually was owned and created by a former mayor. And it's unique in the sense that there's none other on the face of the planet that anybody can, can determine. I have worked to connect Mr. Burns, myself, and Mr. Messier, who you may recall 20 some odd years ago lifted the granite shed that we now occupy, Jones Brothers, in one fell swoop so we could put a new foundation under it. He's perfectly capable of giving good advice. I've not heard back from him. So actually, I'm not specifically before you with a proposal because I wish I had one, but I don't. I am encouraging your good officers, officers to attempt to salvage and, and delay, if you will, something which is irrevocable, namely the demolition. I realize it's on the agenda of the Development Review Board. That jurisdiction, you may know, was transferred from the council to them some decade ago. And it will be on the September meeting. I will attend and ask again for some breathing room since it's complicated proposition financially as well as technically. It's nothing that can be easily stitched together. So with that, I just ask your indulgence and if you're of a mind to it, advance whatever support you think is appropriate as a body or individually to try and save it. I approached the Granite Museum to see if it can partner in some way. And that's still an open question. But thank you for hearing me out.
Our pleasure. Counsel, did you have a question?
So they, Mr. Burns wants to demolition the building sooner rather than later?
I, I cannot speak for Mr. Burns, but it was on the agenda for August and was carried over on a motion by the board itself. And Mr. Burns, I think, is worried about it being a hazard given its very close proximity to other, his other buildings. I know I used to pick up granite at that shed, frankly, 15 years ago or so. So I know it's tight. It was flooded. Mr. Burns's principal properties, I believe, were high enough that they escaped. But this particular building is in the original elevation, as is the DPW building. And so it was, had a visit with sludge, Mr. and Mrs. Sludge.
I'm gonna refrain, refrain from commenting too much, Peter, while, while that hearing is pending because, you know, the hearing's been continued. And, and that is, you know, the subject property is part of a continued hearing. But, but I do recall, and I think this is public knowledge, I think Mr. Burns did, in fact, you know, just in terms of what I would perceive as his willingness to cooperate with a party interested in saving it, I think Mr. Burns did offer to give it away at one point in time, didn't he?
I, I think you're absolutely right. And, and the sticky part is how, what is the meaning of give? Because it's a, a great structure in the wrong place.
Right.
And none of those parameters come cheap to change. And that's why I was deferring to Mr. Messier Senior. Tell me what we're into. What is it? And Mr. Burns is equally curious. And I have not heard back from Mr. Messier. So I, I don't wanna pretend that I understand what's involved in this. It's a, it's a sophisticated and not easy dismemberment or lift or, or a combination of each.
You know Jim Rogers, Jimmy Rogers?
I do not personally, no.
Jimmy Rogers does, he's in the same line of work as well. Jimmy lives out in Callis. You know what I can do? I can, I'll dig out his contact information and shoot it over to you.
I appreciate that. Yeah. Any, any advice, Mr. Messier's semi-retirement, as you probably know.
Right. But he's the sort of king of the movers. He only works 60 hours a week. That's semi-retirement for Norm.
I know, I know, I know. And he was very sweet. We both, we went down and walked it, did a personal visit. And he said, yeah, it could come apart. And I said, well, tell me what, however you lift, is it in Gestimate, back of the envelope? And I haven't heard back.
Gotcha.
So, but I will attend the September meeting and ask for some breathing room. Again, I didn't know this was coming. I just saw the agenda and said, whoops, I better go.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for your time. You're welcome. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. And, oh, yes. Mr. Booton, how are you?
I'm doing well. And yourself?
Good.
So I, since I'm here, might as well pitch for the budget for the BUSD. Wanna let folks know that it's been four attempts. This will be the fourth attempt. We started off with about a 12% budget increase and we're now down to 7.44. And what that equates to Berry City is a cent increase. So for $100,000, a $100,000 house, we're looking at a $10 increase in property taxes. And that's not including the rebate for homestead. And I just wanna make a big pitch for that and hope that folks consider voting for it September 17th. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Any questions, council? Okay. Counsel, we'll move on. We are, we don't have anything under liquor and cannabis, correct then? Okay. Then we are at Item 7, City Manager's Report.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple items for the council. We closed a successful season at the pool last week. Just wanna say we grateful for the great lifeguards who stepped up. These were, these were, I mean, they were youngsters, 15, 16-year-olds, lots of them that took a risk on themselves and they performed very admirably. And we also had a couple of veterans who, who returned to, to really lead the, the staff. So we're very excited that it, nervous about the season at the beginning turned out to be a great season and we're very excited to welcome them back next year for another great season at the pool. Wanna remind residents that the FEMA Disaster Recovery Center is open at the auditorium. It's seven days a week from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 P.M. So it's easy to find. Just drive up the hill. You'll see the signs leading, leading you to the, to the DRC. They're situated in the basement of the auditorium, but it is accessible via elevator. So if you've been impacted in any way, we encourage you to go and, and talk to a real FEMA person, not have to get on a phone call. So it's, it's a great resource to have here locally. The city was part of the EPA grant that was submitted last week. I shared the application with the council. This is a great collaboration between Downstreet, the state, Pat Molten, and our fellow municipality, Montpelier. We submitted a $20 million budget for this grant. This includes some projects that you're all familiar with, such as the Seminary Street Apartments, the Wabi Park redevelopment, Prospect Heights, infrastructure and homes as well. So those are some of the big ticket items, but it's a really substantive grant. Appreciate all the great work. Downstreet did a lot of the, the pen to paper on this and they did a great job pulling this together, but a lot of great collaboration to, to get this across the finish line. Wanna remind residents and the council that I should've asked for higher rates because I'm playing in this basketball game on Saturday and I have no idea how I got roped into that. But we're doing, the Bennington Martins have reached out to us to schedule an exhibition game, as many people know. This is a flood fundraiser. And so all, there's no, you can, you don't have to buy tickets. You can show up at the door. You can put whatever donation you want and it'll go towards flood relief to the Berry Community Relief Fund. And so we are very grateful that the Bennington Martins reached out to us about this. We've put together a very good team. And Brian Baker, who's listening on, I think he was listening online, he's gonna be coaching us. So we do have some ringers. If you read Dave Delkor's piece on this, he, he went through the roster. We do have some people who played all the way from a state championship game to Chief Cushman, who played in middle school. So. And then there's those of us who didn't play anything. So Chief Bale is also playing. So if anything, just come for the opportunity to see us make fools of ourselves. The Martins are doing a great job of, and Tracy Lewis is helping us with this, of doing some great activities during the timeouts. So some of the downtown businesses will be participating and sponsoring some fun activities during the timeouts. And so just encourage people to show up. It'll be, I think it'll be a great night. It'd be nice to fill the auditorium for that. And then I think that was it. The last thing I had on my list was the homelessness letter, but we addressed that in Consent Agenda, so I have no other items.
What was the date and time of the basketball game?
Yes, Saturday, August 31st. It tips off at 8:00.
Saturday.
Yeah. Tips off at 8:00 and I believe they start the, the ceremonies at 7:15. And, and somebody who used to sit on this dais is singing the National Anthem, who also sang tax songs. So, so Carol, Carol is singing the National Anthem for, for the game, so.
It's gonna be a lot of fun.
Yeah.
I have a red sweater and a folding chair for Brian. Hope you all get the Bobby night. So, yeah. So, but we're, it is, it's gonna be a lot of fun, which reminds me, if you could please get that legal opinion I asked you for, this is a city-sponsored event and I am terrified that workers' comp coverage will be in effect. So it's gonna be a lot of fun.
I, I think so. It will.
And I hope, and it's a great cause. So I hope people do. I plan on being there with Karen and I hope folks take the time to come out and, in support of a great cause. And we haven't had, I'm just excited to see another ABA team in Vermont. I remember the Frosty's days, days. Still have the world championship ball that was signed by the Frosty's and still have a signed jersey. So it's gonna be exciting just to, and also to see that level, you know, that level of, of athleticism. It's gonna be pretty, not.
No pressure.
Yeah, you too, Nicholas. Yeah, you're gonna be great. It's gonna be, it really is gonna be a lot of fun. I hope folks can come out.
I don't know what this makes you feel, but we just hung a Frosty's sign in the museum. So it has been a little while, yes.
I'll, I'll bring the basketball down because it is the actual game ball. Yeah. So, okay. So counsel, any other questions? Then we're at Item 8 on the agenda, 8A, which is meet and greet the new superintendent. Welcome. How are you?
I am well. Thank you for having me. So I've been in Berry for two months now. I joined on July 1st and I have just tried to get my arms around all the great things that are happening in the community, but also the challenge ahead of us, which, as you know, is passing a school budget. I'm really hoping this time. you know, is passing a school budget. I'm really hoping this time that we are making some personal contact to people in the community. I've been at the schools doing some meet and greet. We're going to do music in the music festival in the park on September 5th. We're hoping that this is the fourth time. We've come down pretty significantly over $2 million. So, we're hoping that the community can get their arms around that and support the students. They're our future. So, thank you for the opportunity. And if you have any questions, any community members have questions, don't hesitate to contact the superintendent's office. I do have a little link on that page, that if you have questions and you want to pose the question, that we will be answering those questions within 48 hours. So, any other information that you need, just please reach out, and we're happy to provide what you need in order to make an informed decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell us, no, tell us a little about yourself. Tell us about your journey. I mean, here you are.
Oh, my goodness. I'll be here an hour. In a nutshell, I retired from superintendency in Vermont about five or six years ago. I decided to take a job in the Middle East, so I was the first woman superintendent of an American school in Kuwait for two years. We had the pandemic. I had to leave on an evacuation plane, and when I was about to return, my owner told me that I would not be able to leave the country for a year. I had a son trying to have a baby and another one trying to get married, and said, "No way. Mama Bear needs to stay here." I moved to Hawaii for a couple of years because a friend had a job opening, so that was a great adventure as well. When I came back last year, I was not ready to hang up my badge, so I took a job in New Hampshire, Littleton, New Hampshire, and I commuted back to Burlington, Vermont on the weekends. And then, when Berry was looking for a superintendent, I said, "You know what? I'm going to check that out. I think there's a lot of good things happening in that community and a lot of challenges." I have a lot of experience. I've been an educator for over 40 years. I know the superintendency well. I know how important it is to reach out to the community and make personal connections, and that's why I'm here. I'm here to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And watching your work, you've done a great job so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Tom is fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
As long as we're on the subject.
Oh, yes.
You know, because the discussion, I really try not to meddle, whether it's, you know, planning and zoning, whether it's the DRB, whether it's certainly the school district separately elected body. You try not to weigh in. You try not to meddle. You try to let them have the discussions on their own. This one has been tough to watch, I got to tell you. And the tipping point for me was a young man helped me out, council is bonding with the name, who submitted a post on, I think it was the community, the Berry's community page, Tyler?
Tyler Graves.
Tyler Graves. So, Tyler, if you're watching, you're my hero, because Tyler is a high school senior, and just weighed in and let the community know how he thought about the budget and about the discussion, and whether or not further reductions would affect him as a student. And people attacked him. Some people. Some people supported him, and some people, you know, this is a kid, high school senior. I expect that. I mean, you all read Marcus's letters in the last couple of weeks. It was great. It was entertaining. But, you know, you expect that as an adult, but I expect better. I was ashamed of some of the people who responded to him and the way they responded. It's not appropriate. And it's time, you know, this discussion has taken on a life of its own. My biggest concern is that it's not about a budget. It's about something more. And I got to tell you, as mayor, it is a distraction, and it's not something I appreciate to pick up the paper and read that we are the only school district in this state that can't put our differences aside and move forward and look forward to next year's discussion. And that's what we need to do. We need to pass this budget. We need to move on. So, you have been instrumental in leading that discussion. I know it's not an easy discussion. I know the personalities involved are not easy to align, but you've been doing a great job. You've been patient and compassionate and kind, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate that. When the staff came back last week, the message that I had for them, there were a number of messages, but two really important ones is civility and positivity, because I think we've lost our way, right? We can have disagreements, but we need to be able to do that in productive ways, not in ways that make people feel less, or like they don't have an opinion. And positivity, because I think, again, we've lost our way. We have been overshadowed by not having a school budget, and I am here to try and give people hope. We can get beyond this. We will get beyond this, and there's a lot of reason for celebration, so.
Well, and there have been so many years when we passed a budget increase that was five times greater than this one. So, you can only conclude that it's not about the numbers. It's about us versus them, and someone got their, or everyone got their feelings hurt, and it's just about payback. And the only one you're hurting, I can tell you, is you're hurting Berry City and Berry Town. We are hurting collectively. So, I hope folks put their emotions aside and look at the numbers.
Exactly. The numbers do speak for themselves, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
They sure do. They sure do. Thank you again.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. Thank you for having me, and have a great rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
And you're absolutely welcome to stay. We understand if you don't. All good.
Thanks for coming in the morning.
Yes, they are. It's okay.
Could I also say thank you to the other school board members who attended, who are Berry City representatives, Michael Booton, of course, our chair, and Garrett Grant.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Okay, council, we're at item 8B on the agenda, which is the River Program mitigation projects update. And here they are again. Almost the complete. Hey, do any of you play an instrument?
Yes.
You could be, River, you could be a band. I mean, you could keep the group together, and you could be a band. What do you think?
Very not musically inclined.
Okay.
Personally.
All right. Then we'll settle for the scientific stuff, if we must.
Yeah, as I say, Nicholas, we can introduce, I'm Keith Coven with CVR-PC. Will Pitkin, CVR-PC.
Alex Markucci with SLR Consulting, working with CVR-PC on the project.
Roy might be, I think he was going to try to attend.
Yeah, Roy's out of town, so he may or may not pop on online, but.
But the last two weeks, we met with the city staff. Both, two weeks ago, we met online with, Nicholas had COVID, so we didn't really want to get too close, but definitely reviewed a lot of, a lot of projects throughout the city, and we went back and really did that deep dive of looking at everything. Last week, yeah, last week, we met and actually went and did site visits throughout the city, and, yeah, I believe we actually do have some pretty good news overall.
Thank you. So, you all should have seen the most updated project list, which we have reworked since we were here last. And as you'll notice, we kind of dug deeper into the flood mitigation benefit side of things. So, all those columns that kind of deal with risk reduction and all of that have been populated, and we really took the flood mitigation lens on this list to kind of prioritize things further, as well as talking, of course, to city folks, and then the site visits were really helpful that we did as well. So, as you'll see at the top, there's kind of a handful of areas that are really jumping out, and these areas, a lot of the projects that are kind of top, like top four or five, are kind of a collection of different activities or different strategies in these locations. So, as we've talked about many times, the Berlin Street Bridge area continues to rise to the top. So, at this point, we're kind of, we've looked at a number of different options for bridge replacement potentially, but also considering bridge removal. And we've also, we're talking the other day with the city manager and with Brian Baker about the potential to maybe, if that bridge is removed, do something such as a pedestrian footbridge instead, so that folks in that neighborhood could maintain the access to downtown as well.
Yeah, and just, that's exactly right. And the other piece of that is, we also have water infrastructure on that bridge, so the pedestrian bridge would allow us to keep that there instead of digging underneath.
Exactly, yes. You could maintain that line crossing with a pedestrian bridge instead of a traffic bridge. So, that's, of course, that's toward the top of the list as well. And then, Willy Street Bridge area has kind of risen to the top as well. So, Nicholas, do you have the flood profiles?
I do.
Okay, perfect. We can just look at those really quickly. So, one reason that that rose to the top of the list, we did a little bit of a deeper dive and looked kind of at the FEMA flood insurance study that was prepared for Washington County. This is several years ago now, but it still provides valuable information for this kind of thing. And so, the profile that you see, it's a little bit zoomed out, but on the very bottom is the approximate riverbed location, and then those kind of different dotted lines up top represent different levels of floods. So, from the 10-year up to the, I believe, the 500-years, the top line. So, it's helpful to view, this is kind of like a profile, kind of looking down, moving down the river. So, downstream is shown on the left side, and upstream is shown on the right. And you can look at the crossings, whether they're street crossings, railroad crossings, kind of all those bridge structures are shown in this profile, and you can see how these structures are impacting the flood profile levels. So, Willy Street, which is shown right on the right side here, kind of near those dotted lines, you'll see a small I, and that represents the beam of the bridge itself. So, as you can see, almost none of the floods are passing under the bridge. So, the 10-year, which is the smallest flood shown here, it's hitting that low chord, and then everything else is pretty much overtopping. And one thing that's really interesting, you can look, as you see, as you move to the next page, which is moving just upstream, if you would, Nicholas, is that that bridge, according to the FEMA modeling, it does raise water surface elevations by three, four, or five feet, and that has a pretty significant extent to it as well. So, moving up like 2, 3,000 feet upriver, you can see that that water surface is essentially flat for those bigger floods. So, it shows that that's a really big pinch point, that's kind of raising that water surface elevation for a stretch, not only right at the bridge, but a stretch upstream as well. And moving up from there, the Trestle Bridge similarly doesn't pass any of the floods that are shown. They're pretty much all overtopping straight over the top. And then, Berlin Street also similarly is not passing those floods. So, it's just another lens to look at, kind of, these structures and prioritize which bridges might be having more impacts. Of course, we have all of the super helpful local knowledge that we've gotten from all of you and all the stories and everything from flooding, but just another tool to evaluate those bridges and the impact that they might be having. So, that's one reason why Willy Street came back up to the top. It's also because there's an interesting opportunity there. The Willy Street project, so making modifications to that bridge potentially to make it wider and bring those beams up a little bit, essentially make the opening wider, larger in general, but also coupling that with the buyout at 572 North Main Street, which is shown down the list, but we would recommend that those be implemented in conjunction, because that property is just upstream on River, right? And what you could do there is, as that buyout, which is currently in process, as that goes through, you can take that land and lower that to make it more connected to the river. So, essentially, that would give you a spot where debris, sediment, all those things, everything that's flowing down the river can drop out, rather than kind of clogging up that bridge and causing further problems there. So, seems like a really good area to have kind of those suite of activities, as well as potentially some sewer line work, because there is kind of a sewer line and a siphon right on site there. So, that rose to number two, both for impact and also opportunistically, because that buyout, that property, is proceeding through the buyout process. It seems like a really good activity to do there. And then, another priority area that has risen to the top kind of time and time again is Gunner's Brook. So, as we know, Nicholas has spoken about, there are a number of new buyouts that are moving through the process on Harrington Ave, and then there's a couple new buyouts as well on Brook Street. So, we did visit that site on Friday and kind of took a closer look and started to think more about what we could do at that site with kind of this new space that would be opening up. So, that project potentially includes some additional floodplain restoration, so lowering of some of those lands around the existing houses, and then potentially reconfiguring the debris catcher that's there, because, as we know, kind of in floods, trees and everything gets hung up on the debris catcher and creates almost like a dam. And we've seen that flow kind of jumps out on either side of it and causes issues on the roads as well. So, potentially reconfiguring that as well in that area.
And Alex, if I could just jump in, because I think this was a really helpful site visit to visualize it. So, if you've all seen, been there right after the flood, I'm sure you've seen the wall of debris and wood. So, what we were even just brainstorming with the team, there's you sort of offset some of the beams so that the channel can still sort of snake through, because what's, as Alex described, what's happening is that water, the debris catches are working almost too well. And so, what's happening is, once they're jammed with debris, that's just sending water, that's what's sending water down Maple and destroying Harrington and Avenue, and that water's not getting back into the channel until it gets down to 62. So, just visually, it was very helpful to picture that area, and if you've been there, you can, I'm sure you can picture it as well, just offsetting, you know, maybe three beams, three beams, three beams, three beams, sort of in a triangle format maybe, and then the river can snake around it. But it was something to do, frankly, even if those buyouts don't proceed, just because that rack right now is contributing to some of the issues we're having in other parts of the city. So, thanks, Alex.
Thank you, Nicholas. Yeah, and it kind of, as debris catches pretty quickly during flooding, it quickly kind of backs up water there. So, definitely reconfiguring it would be super helpful. So, Gunner's Brook is one that's risen to the top, and then Granite Street area, we did visit the Granite Street area as well on Friday, and as we know, Deserol Machines is a buyout. And so, we looked at kind of options in that area for some floodplain reconnection. And the parcel isn't, it's kind of an interesting shape, but the way that the flood patterns happen in that area, based on our conversations with folks, is that kind of water is already coming across the floodplain. So, if we're able to lower that land where Deserol is located, and kind of, it's a little bit higher along the river there, if we lower all that land, we could kind of allow floodwaters that are out on the floodplain to return to the channel, rather than to continue flowing toward the houses and whatnot at Granite Street. So, as the buyout is proceeding already for Deserol Machines, it seems like an important place to also consider some more floodplain reconnection to allow the floodwaters to get back toward the channel anyway, and hopefully reduce flooding of adjacent neighborhoods. Of course, the Trestle Bridge remains in the top 10, and I don't know, Nicholas, if you want to speak a little more about kind of what's happening there.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we've had a lot of good conversations about sort of the city's ability to impact change here anyhow, anyway. I think that it's important to continue probably multiple approaches on this Trestle Bridge, because there's probably not, you know, this, it may turn out that this grant is not the right approach to change that situation permanently. That's why, as you've noticed, from when we started this process to after the councilors ranked the projects, this has sort of fallen steadily down, because I think this may not be the right approach. It's still a high priority. This may not be the grant to do it through, but we are, you know, I think pursuing a lot of different ways to get some movement here.
So, where are we now with the different Trestle Bridge approaches?
Well, I think what we're waiting for is the alternatives to come from the report that was commissioned by the state. So, the state did, through a brick grant, they commissioned a report to find alternatives. Those were the public meetings that the state held last winter, and I think the, last year, they held the public meetings about that, those alternatives. So, I think we're waiting to see what those are. Realistically, I think we can expect that hopefully anything that's there is better than what's there now. It just may be that this grant may not be the right approach to tackle that particular issue. Now, that's why this has fallen a little bit down the list, and some of these other projects that we've identified through our site visits have come up, because they have the potential to, I think, be not only more realistic, but have a greater immediate impact on our flood situation.
I mean, we do, I mean, Trestle isn't used. Trestle isn't going to be used, you know. So, we have this understanding, I guess, with the state. They understand how we feel. We want it to go away, and we want something better. We understand that the railroad would like to continue use of the crossing. We understand that there may be some benefits to that, the elimination of up to 90, you know, 90 truck trips up and down Main Street on a daily basis. But they understand clearly that we're going to be a very active participant in the permitting process, and it's a lengthy permitting process. So, personally, I've said repeatedly, I think the sooner we can remove that trestle, the better. And we understand that the railroad would like to retain the crossing. The state supports that decision. And like I said, we'll keep an open mind. We'll look at your design, and if you can show us a design that results in 80% less debris accumulating at that site, I would be surprised if the city council wouldn't say, "Well, thank you." But it's, you know, it's going to have to be a significant improvement. Well, it's not hard to improve over what's there. I mean, let's be realistic. So, I'm hopeful that that situation will resolve itself sooner rather than later, and we won't have to spend any funds resolving that situation. We'll see. We'll see.
Thanks, Alex.
Sure, um, so just to kind of round out, I suppose, the top ten, um, we're still including the hydrology and hydraulic study in that top ten. Um, not that there's necessarily going to be ten projects, you know, that we end up doing concepts and all of that submitting for, um, that number's still to be determined. But, um, so doing that study of the river and the kind of watershed flow as well to better understand flooding issues. Um, and that would also really help evaluate these different types of mitigation projects. Like if we have the model in place, we'd be able to kind of test out these projects better, um, to determine exactly kind of amount of benefits. Um, sediment management plan specifically at the, around the bridges on Stevens Branch is currently ranked at number nine. And then stormwater pipe network study, so we got some really good feedback from Brian Baker on Friday, talking about kind of the key areas. And it sounds like a number of the different areas are kind of currently being studied by DPW. And the kind of one that still, uh, remains is the Berlin Street Network, Pipe Network. So we've included that kind of called out specifically for the Pipe Network Study to understand better the runoff, um, the patterns kind of of the storm pipes. And how to better, um, how to improve the infrastructure such that you don't have kind of these outlets that are buried and underwater and kind of backing up constantly. So, um, that's top ten. There's a, a number, I mean, of course, there's fifty projects now. We also visited on Friday the West Second Street area. And that's kind of an interesting spot where we have a couple of buyouts, a couple of properties that have submitted for buyouts there. And that could be a really, really key spot for flood mitigation project. If like another property signed on, for example, RK Miles, then you could kind of do a bigger area in there. We could maybe even have an overflow channel or something like that, kind of cutting across that really big bend in the river, where you could relieve the pressure kind of as the river goes around the bend.
And, and that's adjacent nearby to the Trestle as well. So it's, it's another reason that's important to us, yeah.
Right, right in that area. Um, so any questions on the list as you're seeing it now or anything kind of we're talking about?
This is sort of both on the list and actually our next agenda item. But when you were here last, we had asked if SLR had the capacity to do the hydrology, uh, study. I don't know if you have an answer on that.
I'm not sure I can make that decision, but, um, potentially. I know that Roy, um, he was working on kind of pulling together a more detailed scope. So looking at, um, pulling together a cost estimate for kind of what that study would entail and thinking about, you know, the number of hours and our staffing and whatnot. And he was kind of currently looking into that, so he could speak more to that than I could, but.
For, yeah, more for Nicholas than anything. I think, you know, we're already working with these folks, so if they do have the capacity to get that study done, great. But like if there's another firm that can get it done six months sooner, I, I want us to prioritize the timing rather than the, like, I will pay a little bit extra for another consulting firm. If we can get this going quicker.
And I think, um, the, the great, we are, we've been looking at our procurement policy and we have the ability for consultant type services. We, we have flexibility for things like that, so we don't have to bid it necessarily. So if SLR does have the bandwidth, then we can move that way. If it doesn't, we can procure it, it's, we have a lot of flexibility, so with those types of services.
We also, oh, we want to talk a little bit about timeline as well. And maybe Keith can kind of address like what next steps would be and what our timeframe is looking like currently.
Yeah, so basically the timeframe we're looking at, by the end of this month, basically we need to have that hardened up list so that SLR does have that time to do that deeper dive and really start doing some base engineering. So we can go for that, the larger hazard mitigation grants. You know, basically, uh, our timeframe we're looking at is about December for that final full application to go in. So you know, uh, what everybody's been advertising and seeing so far is just the pre-applications that VM is taking in. So we're getting to not have to worry about that step and just go directly to the full application. Now, uh, that, we haven't been told how much they're going to fund, you know, for, for your city or anything like that. But I mean, uh, most of, the top couple of projects will definitely go through. Uh, but yeah, that's the, that's the timeframe we're looking at. Uh, so, you know, trying to firm up what you all agree with as far as the, those top projects are. You know, we, we're, we're on a, getting on a short timeline here, so by the end of this month, we definitely need that. Or not the end of this month, I mean, end of September, sorry, sorry, sorry. It's been that kind of week, you know.
So we need to choose or we can just take your top ten and say?
That's up to you all to.
Yeah, it's up to you all to decide as.
Yeah, because he was the city.
Representatives of the city and you'll be submitting the applications as the city. So, um, we kind of are providing our ranking now of what we think would have the biggest flood mitigation benefit.
But it also depends on cost, uh, you know, I mean, you can mix and match. If there are projects that are, you know, we'll love the low cost, high benefit projects, uh, you know. So if there, there could be some that are fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, we only have X dollars. But we listen to these good folks after we do the modeling and hydrology studies. And they say, you know, if you bundle these, that would likely be more effective in neighborhoods than doing this one big one here that costs the same money. So the relationship continues.
And we actually have further funding at the, not, uh, with SLR, but with the RPC, that once we're all done with this, uh, we will take this back to our staff and look if there's any other funding sources, be it, uh, Clean Water Service Provider, those sort of things, to do some of these projects as well, outside of, you know, the hazard mitigation funding. So hopefully we can, you know, continue working with you, find some other projects besides just what goes through VM and, uh, still get some more work done.
And I did ask the manager to put, um, to put item, an item on our agenda to authorize the expenditure of up to eighty thousand in ARPA funds. So we, we could start that study, those studies, I should say, because it's stormwater, hydrology and modeling, sooner rather than later. So that we could start to at least accumulate some data sooner rather than later. And I assume you're supportive of that decision.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be great to, it'd be great to get the, the kind of modeling going on the sooner side. So that, um, you can kind of continually use that modeling to inform how you're proceeding through the project list and thinking of other projects as they come up and things like that. And, um, I know I mentioned that Roy was kind of scoping that study and he's out of town for a couple of days. But I think he was planning on getting back in touch sometime later this week about that, so he'll have more information.
Yeah, I'm sorry, council, you had a question?
Um, well, I guess I appreciate that we're, that there's the opportunity to, um, potentially do more items, maybe with other funding sources. Um, because the concern that I have is that we are, you know, we, we, these are, you know, a top ten and they're going to be the, the heavy hitters, if you will. And they will, um, have the biggest impact. But, you know, for someone who's getting flooded every single time the Potash Brook floods, that's not really very helpful for them. So how do we as a city, um, what, what are the things, and I, I continue to ask this, because these projects are big and they're probably going to take years and years and years. Um, so how, what are the things that, and maybe this isn't a question for you, maybe this is a question for our Department of Public Works. But what are the things that we can do to start making a difference now for, even if they're smaller projects like, um, the mayor was discussing? Because I feel like there, there are some neighborhoods that are really getting hit every single time and they're not rising to the top.
Um, yeah, so, so council, I think one of the things is, and, and Brian I know is, is listening, so he can weigh in if, uh, after I, I make these comments. But I know that Public Works was over near Potash, um, on Nelson Street doing some work to, to stabilize that crossing there to keep water in that channel. Um, so they were, uh, they were doing some work to, you know, to start where they could there. I think that we, in, in our conversations with, with the river folks too, we, I think we need some more, um, we need some more studies of what to do there. It's just, it's not clear, it's not as, as evident as some of these other locations of what can have an impact. Um, so I think further interventions there, um, need some study. I think the other challenge there is that that Brook runs through a mix of public and private property. And so we run into the public-private property issues. Um, so it, for, for those reasons, it's, it's just not as, um, it's just not as obvious, I think, is, is why we're at this point. We need more information on, on the Potash Brook. And Brian, I don't know if you're listening, if you have anything to add, um, to those comments.
No, I am here, but, um, that's really the, the same way as we're trying to, to get the biggest ones done first. And, you know, the smaller ones have different, uh, circumstances that we have to look at. But, um, you know, the, the little things we are still trying to, to remediate, you know, internally if we can. So, you know, everyone can be, you know, we are trying to, to remedy the, some of the stuff that we can internally, you know, on a day-to-day basis. But, um, we keep trying.
I will also say on, on the Potash Brook, um, topic is we don't know kind of what the best solution is there. There's, it's pretty complex, there's a lot going on. And that's the kind of thing where, um, if you did have a hydraulic model, you could pretty easily evaluate different options there, whether looking at upsizing all the culverts, does that improve things? Or creating small floodplanes across people's backyards or maybe even buyout of certain homes and lowering of floodplanes. So we don't know exactly what would be the most beneficial for that area. But that's the kind of thing you could look at a lot in a lot more depth with modeling if you had it.
And, and that could be, you know, that could be a project in the top ten of doing that study. Um, because as I said, it's, it's just not, the solutions aren't obvious to, to us. If they're not obvious to me, they're not, and you know, they're, they're not obvious, I think, to, to us as a team when we looked at these sites, um, in these last couple of weeks.
Well, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna restate my concern, and I did say the Potash, but I also think that, that where the Potash and the Edgewood Brook converge, then the, that Courier Park neighborhood is just getting slammed every single time. And so how do we help them? Um, because there, you know, there are certain houses, they're just every single time getting flooded and it, it's very frustrating. And I, I mean, I understand, like, we don't want roads washing out, you know, I saw what was going on on Nelson Street, I walked by there today. But I, but you know, for people who are having their homes flooded every single time it rains a few inches, that's.
Ditto Center Street.
Yeah, yes.
I'm gonna echo Potash Brook, um, that Courier Park neighborhood is, is getting hit real bad every time as well. Um, and I also sort of have some, some follow-up timeline questions for you all. If tonight we were to say, okay, go ahead and, and scope out costing for the top ten. And I personally would also like to, love to see cost for anything that's a low-cost, moderate, or high priority. I was looking at a couple, there's some, there's a couple of culvert projects that are way outside the top ten, but might be easy to throw in. Um, if we were to say, go ahead, cost out those top ten plus a few extras, what's our timeline for you coming back to us for cost and us making that decision? I want to make sure we're moving forward to meet that September deadline, um, that you had discussed.
About, do you know about how long you'd need?
Um, to, to do cost estimates and, um.
At least back.
I mean, I think, I think we're planning on taking the next couple of months to kind of look at the top projects. And, and for the ones that are going to be moving forward, it's more than just cost estimates. So doing concept designs, which is kind of like a bit more engineering work and also preparing the benefit cost analysis for those. Um, but if there are specific ones that people are interested in cost numbers on beyond the ones that are going to be having the concept designs, we can also kind of work on some of that.
So, so I guess maybe I'll reframe the question. I had understood the mayor to be saying earlier that he wanted to see costs before making decisions on which projects to move forward. So I think that's where I was.
See something.
So I think that's where my question was, was coming from. So to reframe, uh, are you asking us to give you the green light on a certain number of projects that will just full steam ahead with cost and pre-engineering for that September deadline?
I guess realistically, uh, for the timeframe we're talking about, we'd probably need that, like, your top ten to, to start developing those full ones. Some of the smaller ones, we might be able to do a cost estimate, you know, at least a very preliminary. You know, if it was just a culvert or something like that, I mean, those are a lot easier to come up with, the ballpark. Now, you know, if you're, uh, upsizing a bridge, that's a lot, you know, obviously you really have to factor in a lot of pieces there, especially, uh, with the sewer lines and things like that that run through there. You know, uh, that's going to take a lot more study to even figure out what you need to factor in for that. Uh, so, I mean, yeah, I, to be honest, without Roy being here, I, I'd really like to get his two cents on that, of what, uh, timeframe we would need. Uh, I think we could do some preliminary, like, estimates probably before the end of September, you know. Uh, but, you know, like I said, they're going to be very preliminary, you know, uh, that deeper dive.
So it sounds like we may have to move forward with, with asking you to prepare at least, if not all, a substantial chunk of these without seeing sort of what the final cost estimates are going to be. I just wanted to clarify that.
That was the initial plan, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Cost in the table, which of course isn't enough detail for really evaluating some of these things. But, um, yeah, the cost was kind of going to be prepared in conjunction with the concept designs. But like I said, if there's other projects you really want to know about that are maybe outside of the top X that are going to be going to concept design, we can definitely work on this as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Shakwa?
There's a fair amount of money in this particular grant program, correct? So wouldn't it be better to do high-end projects in terms of cost for this particular grant and look at the lower cost things for other grant programs? Would that make sense?
Yeah, so we, that does make sense. We've gotten some feedback from Vermont Emergency Management that kind of the, the high-ticket projects are really going to be well-suited for this funding source. Um, and kind of the much lower cost ones, not as much, just for kind of logistically managing paperwork on numbers of projects. And also just the, the type of funding is well-suited for those big projects as well.
It's like, so if we did target Berlin Street Bridge, that might make a lot of sense because there's money there.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've been talking, you know, like a million-plus projects, dollar projects for this. And the, these top ones are certainly suitable and seem like they would score favorably with a cost-benefit analysis and kind of be right in line with the, the goals and, the goals of VEM as far as the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
So I, I think the other framing I would do, uh, for the council is that, um, when we've been working with the team on these projects, one of the other things that, um, we've tried to do is to, you know, rank them in terms of, of mitigation value. And so I think that there's, you know, fifty-one of these projects and we could all probably list fifty other projects would be helpful. Um, but we've really put an eye towards, especially with the site visit, which were really helpful for us to see the geography and see how the river is moving and where things could land. Um, we've really tried to get this particular list down to the things that, that we think would have the greatest, um, the greatest value mitigation-wise. So that's something else for you to consider. Um, I think that, um, you know, in my personal opinion, I would, you know, Peter's going to say this, but remove the trestle from this list, because I think that there's, there's probably little value in a, in a attacking that problem in this grant. And it's just going to take up space and bandwidth that we probably can use the team on something else. Um, and I think we can probably take out the hydrology and hydraulics, because we're going to try to do that separately. Um, but, you know, realistically, the other thing to, as you consider these decisions, and I realize that we're not getting every part of the city. Um, but we're trying to basically target, um, the projects that we believe as we've started with the grand list and, um, gotten your feedback and then done the site visits, that we think would have the greatest impact, um, if they were done, you know, singularly, so. Yes.
I'm wondering if you folks who will have, uh, constituents asking like, why did this project get chosen over this one? I'm thinking specifically with Willie and Berlin Street Bridges. Do you think that, um, do you have any more questions that would help you answer those questions that you will, uh, likely receive as these go forward? Um, especially, I mean, because there was, like Nicholas was anticipating, there might be some, um, some people would be upset that with the Berlin Street, um, bridge, they might have to drive farther. But there is another access out of that neighborhood and Willie Street, on the other hand, there is no other access and that's the only way to access the sewage treatment plant. So just these sort of like, you know, quick talking points, do you think that, would it, would it be helpful to get more of these? Do you have any things that might be?
Well, I, I'm from Ward Three, which is the north end. And most people are excited that the Berlin Street Bridge would go and save their neighborhood, ditto the Willie Street. So, and I've talked to folks about lowering the pavement along the river there. And they're like, that means it wouldn't cross three or two. And they're like, it sounds great to them. So that's that group of people.
I think, um, you know, I think it might be helpful, uh, at some point, you've done such a great job. Maybe we expand this forum and give others besides the city council the opportunity to question. You know, we've heard the Courier, you know, Park Neighborhood mentioned quite a few times. Yeah, it's always great to have Public Works doing a project right in front of the mayor's house. Uh, the reason for, but interestingly, what they learned, they actually went up there, that's where the Edgewood Brook or Potash Brook, whatever, you know, jumped the road, took off down Nelson Street, flooded the neighborhood down at Berkeley. Uh, it undermined the road to the point where they had to, you know, they had to fix the road. Nelson Street was undermined on the Camp Street side. And as they were fixing. And as they were fixing the road, they looked at it and said, look at how this road is crowned. Well, the water jumps the brook and it just shoots it straight down Nelson Street. So, if we lower the road, and we have to rebuild the road anyway, it's undermined. So, if we lower the road, it will keep as much water as possible in the channel. Now, that's not great news for the folks on Courier Street because it sends more water down there. But that is in fact where the water belongs. I think the Courier Street problem, I think it's solvable, but we've got to deal with it on the trail, you know, the uphill side of Nelson Street, and there's a lot of real estate there. I know it's ours, you know, so I see the channel, I see the opportunities there. The good news is there is a lot of real estate between, you know, Nelson Street and Courier Park. So, I think it's a problem that's fixable, but as you said, it's quite complex because as you get past Camp Street, then you've got a city cemetery that's 60 feet up and you've got residential neighborhoods that are, you know, 60 feet down. So, that one's going to be a little more complex, but I think we can, I think we can, personally, I think we can, we can figure it out. And lastly, it took 75 years to get here, to squeeze the toothpaste out of this tube to, you know, it's probably gonna take 50 to put the toothpaste back in the tube. And all we can do as a city, we don't have $5 million a year to spend on flood mitigation. I wish we did. Obviously, you're gonna be hearing more about it in the city budget. We're going to have to have some sort of fund where we just commit to X. This is at least something we can afford, whether it's half a million or 250,000, whatever it is, you know. I mean, how do you eat an elephant? So, you know, it's the best we can do, but it's, I hope people understand, it's, we'll do these high-impact projects first, but, and we have the opportunities with some of the funding, but let's face it, in two or three years, absent flooding, there'll be a new shiny object for everybody to look at, so. But thank you, the work you're doing is really helpful.
And one of the things just to remember is, you know, as we move forward with this list, projects that don't make it this year, you know, there's gonna be a whole new round of HMGP funding for next year from this summer. You know, so this list, you know, and we can add new things to it, you know, I mean, obviously, we'll keep it, as the region will still be here to keep helping you. You know, SLR isn't going anywhere, you know, they're still gonna be in the area. So, we'll be here to keep supporting you in this process, you know. And the Potash, I mean, that's a very unique, as you've said, especially it's so channelized in those littoral sections. It's probably gonna need a study just to understand how to deal with all those private property issues, if you're gonna try to open that channel up at all, or whatever, you know, comes out in an engineering study of how to deal with that.
And just to directly answer your question, I think like even having this list is a great help for us. Just having something, you know, with Counselor Guston and I have been working on this larger flood document, just having something, people understand that this is really complicated and hard and that things take time. And just having something there to reference at all is extremely helpful and, you know, we can't do that because we're not river scientists. But I think that, and I think we're planning on doing this anyway, but as we move through the process and those, you know, the engineering, the conceptualizations, as that all comes together, a couple bullet points per project of what the flood mitigation value in what specific areas of the city. I mean, like we can, we all know what removing the Berlin Street Bridge will do, but just having that written down as this plan comes together in a more final form, I think will also help people digest what we're doing.
Yes.
I would just add to this, and as we're talking about the list, I agree with the city manager that the Trestle Bridge is gonna get taken care of in other ways. And I would also given our next agenda item is to approve expenditure for the hydrology study. I would also yank that off this list. That's the thing we know needs to be a baseline. It's gotta happen, so we're willing to pay for it to happen. We're not, we don't wanna roll the dice with the grant application.
Same thing with the pipe study probably too.
Frankly, yeah, sure, frankly with the pipe study as well, the stormwater. Yep, so, would love to see us going, with that, we can go down to like 12 and 13.
Could we leave it on the list, but perhaps, I don't know, color-coded or something? So, that when people say, well, what are you doing?
Yeah.
We can say, well, here's the list, and, you know, the yellow ones, we're pursuing this funding.
Yeah, for VEM, yeah, yeah.
And the green ones are funded already.
Yep.
Sure, yeah, just not include it in the VEM.
So, it would fall, I mean, it wouldn't have numeric value because it would be fully funded. So, it would fall either to the top or the bottom. Perfect. Anything else, counsel? Or folks? No? Mr. Booton?
Is there still a box culvert underneath the Nelson Street road where Potash goes there?
Kinda. It's, it's kinda there. It's, no, I mean, it's compromised. So, the box culvert plugged in this last storm. So, the area right in front of my home where the, where the stone walls are, probably about three feet of silt has filled that area in. The box culvert that runs under, the original box culvert plugged with debris and then the silt came in, so it's no longer functioning. The silt level has risen to the point where the three big stormwater overflows. That's where the water is currently flowing. So, there was at least four feet of silt that filled that area in. So, it's the overflow that's actually working to remove water now.
We gonna clean that out or?
It's private property and every time things get wiped out, I cringe if the city goes up there. Yes, I am going to pay to clean it out. I am going to pay to restore the stone walls. I'm going to put Karen's beautiful wrought iron fence back and all of her plantings. The city is not. The city's working on the road. Yes, so we'll fix it. Any other, yes?
One last, just annoying timeline question. What will we have when we see you next? Are we gonna move forward? Are you going to prepare stuff and move forward? I'm just trying to get a sense of what our next steps are.
As I say, you asked for preliminary cost estimates. As I say, I think we can at least get you a list of that, whether we come all the way back to city council. I mean, that's up to your decision if you'd like us back again before the end of September. But, you know, we could at least give you an update on where we're at, you know, I'm sure with this list and what you've given us tonight, we should be able to start moving forward, I think, with the, actually diving deeper into these top projects. And starting that, that process of working on that engineering. But, yeah, yeah, I think.
I just wanna make sure we're making decisions in a timely manner that let you get the grant proposals ready.
Yeah, I mean, the way I'd like to leave it is when you think there is information that would be beneficial. I mean, I, your time is valuable. I don't want you coming here just for the sake of a dog and pony show. I mean, and you haven't, I don't mean to imply that, but you know, I also want, you know, I'm, we're not going to tell you when, when you, you may have information that you think might be useful or updates that you think might are useful, you know, might be useful. Love to have you back at the end of September, you know, before the end of September because that means we're continuing to make progress. So, that would be music to my ears, but I'd rather leave it up to you communicating with the city manager in terms of when you might have something meaningful to present to the council as, and just, you know, being respectful of your time.
We'll coordinate then with Nicholas and we'll determine when that's gonna be.
Perfect. And we think, if we think it's been too long, you'll get a note, we miss you. Love, city council. We're now feeling the love.
Yeah, yeah, as I say, we've had great conversations.
Have you found someone else?
So, just.
Yes.
Just one more, so, the hydrology study, which we're gonna find in another way, does that include looking at stormwater and stormwater management systems? Is that a separate thing?
A little bit of both. So, the hydrology study would consider precipitation in the modeling of like the watershed and kind of how water is moving and flows and how much water there is. But then the specific stormwater infrastructure would be the separate study, the pipe study. So, we understand from conversations with Brian Baker that he's kind of working on some pipe study elements already in a couple areas, but yeah, to answer your question, the stormwater infrastructure piece is kind of a separate study. Although it all plays in. It's all connected, of course.
Yeah, they're all part of the, counsel, they were all part of the same, sort of the same package, but we knew that the stormwater study, the stormwater system study was going to be very different in that Brian was putting that together. There are some areas where, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Nicholas, he's going to start first because we know there are certain areas that we don't know much about where the storm pipes go. And we also know that there are certain areas that we know are compromised.
Yeah, and we just recently received OSHA authorization to enter the Bix culvert that runs underneath the city. So, we have two, two DPW employees who are volunteer firefighters who are taking one for the team. So, Brian, I don't know if you have anything else to share on that, but I think we're all, we have got the green light to move there. That was a big gap in our understanding.
The ledger continues.
I really wanna, I'm only half kidding.
Just a GoPro on your head?
It's a body camera, the police body camera.
Excellent return on investment.
So, yeah, this is Brian here. We are moving ahead on, to map out those culverts so we can have, cut in actual access points so that we could, you know, clean it and maintain it. The other project that is moving ahead is the North Main Drainage Project that was designed with the Granite Street, which was never built. So, we're pushing that one forward. Also, it's currently in final design and we hopefully, we can get that one funded. But those are kind of the two that are on the plate right now.
Then is there modeling that will, is there modeling that will tell us what happens if it rains four inches in an hour versus two inches in an hour versus, I mean, are there reasonable? You know, we use the river. We have marks on the river and that's, you know, I used to use the Potash Brook. Crossing Nelson Street is my sort of canary in a coal mine. I'd watch it. And if that started to breach, I knew we were gonna be in trouble in the city. I knew the water was just coming up too fast, so. But is there modeling that you could provide to the city that would say, look, if it, if the forecast is two inches of rain in a one-hour period, you're gonna be fine. You know, if the river's running at normal levels, you're gonna be fine. You might have a little localized flooding versus six inches of rain in a one-hour period. What's gonna happen with that?
So, yes, that's the kind of thing that you can evaluate by looking at both a hydrologic model and a hydraulic model. So, there are two separate models, but they kind of feed into each other in a way. So, looking at the hydrology is how you kind of determine how much water and the timing of water. So, you can use the hydrology, the information from the hydrology model to then put different hydrographs, we call them hydrographs, into the hydraulic model. So, you can change the timing of the storm and use the hydrologic model to inform that input of flow to the hydraulic model, which will then, you can, what we're thinking of doing here is a two-dimensional hydraulic model. So, with that kind of model, you can kind of watch a flood wave move through an area. So, by fine-tuning the hydrograph and the timing of the water with how much water using the hydrology piece, you can then feed that into the hydraulic model and look at kind of different timing of peaks and magnitude of peaks of flow as well, if that answers your question. So, it's really helpful to do both in kind of a setting like this.
And again, not holding anyone to anything, but do you think our budget of $80,000 is realistic? Or do you think, you know, we heard 40, was it 40 to 80?
Forty to 60, I think.
Forty to 60 and we actually popped it up.
I'm trying to remember. I looked at the draft budget last week and I think, I think Roy can speak more to that. I wish he could be here tonight, but I know, I know he'll follow up this later to speak about it.
We could change it fairly quickly anyway.
Okay.
You know, we have remaining ARPA funds and I just wanted to make sure we were making the right decision tonight. Anyone else? Any questions? Once again, thank you. We look forward to next time. Okay, counsel, we are at item 8C on the agenda. This is to authorize an expenditure of up to $80,000 in ARPA funding for a, and it's hydrology, but I think we all understand it's hydrology, storm modeling, it's, it's an expanded sort of study. So, it's not just hydrology. Yeah, he's messed it up again. You enjoying that?
Not I, I didn't get a snipe.
Anyone care to make that motion?
I would move with Counselor Wazza's previous suggestion of SLR is our first choice, but timing is our top consideration. So, I would move that.
Second.
Yeah, I think that's understood. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Counsel, we're at item 8D on the agenda. We did have a hearing warned. I have been watching the screen. If you'd like, counsel, we can go back. We can do item D quickly. I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot of discussion about our local hazard mitigation plan. You did have that in your packet. Obviously, very well done, very thorough. Is there a motion, please?
So, moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Yes.
The manager.
Oh, no, I was just, I was just gonna note that it was noted in the memo, but we are asking sort of for a conditional approval. This will go to FEMA for review. FEMA may have things that they require for their approval, so we're sort of asking counsel preemptively for us to modify it so that we can get FEMA approval if FEMA request, demands, changes. So, I just wanted to note that for your vote.
To speed up the process, can we, is it permitted that we, we approve any amendments as recommended by FEMA?
Yeah, that's what, that's how the motion's written in your memo.
Okay.
I just wanted you to know, be aware of that.
So, that motion is made. That motion is seconded. That motion, motion is understood. Any discussion or questions, Counselor Spalding?
So, I read all 109 pages and it is a very thorough study. And I have a million questions, but I will not get into them. My, probably the biggest question I have is regarding the dams. Because one, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the page it was on. I think it was fairly early in the, in the plan. It, in one, it says, okay, this is on page 15, at the very bottom. It says, there are two dams in Berry City listed in Vermont Dam Inventory, blah, blah, blah. One is classified as low hazard potential and one is rated as minimal. None of the dams are owned by the city and there are no high hazard potential dams in Berry City. Then you go further onto page 16 and halfway down, it starts talking about the second high hazard dam is a Thurman Dix reservoir dam with a poor condition rating. This dam is an earthen dam that holds the water supply for and is owned by Berry City. Those are contradictory statements.
The one is not in, they're not located within the city is the issue, I think.
No, 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 it says none of them are owned by the city.
Owned by the city.
And it clearly says it is owned by Berry City.
Sorry, I'm the one who broke that.
Keith, can you come up to the microphone?
You probably didn't think I was gonna read all 109 pages.
Actually, I've impressed somebody.
I have a lot of questions.
So, FEMA requires you to actually report on any dams, even if they are outside of the city boundary? So, there are no high hazard potential dams within the city?
I got that.
Now, I could adjust the text to explain that a little better, I guess, that if there's anything upstream of the city, you still have to at least mention and bring that up. And those dams, you know, obviously are upstream above the city. So, that's why the high hazard potential dam was mentioned.
And I, I think my biggest concern is, concern is that it is a high hazard potential dam that we own.
Yes.
And it may not impact us as I'm reading this, but it's going to impact the residents of Orange.
Yes.
And so, that's a concern for me.
Yes.
So.
Boy, any, so any dam that could cause loss of life is considered a high hazard potential dam. That's, it's just, wait, it's just what FEMA refers to, you know, and it doesn't matter what the status, what the condition. You know, it could be a brand-new dam in perfect condition, still higher, high hazard potential. In, you know, in that, I know the city had been studying the dam for maintenance issues as well and I believe there is text in there that discusses that.
Yes.
So, you know, as the city, you're obviously doing your due diligence, trying to make sure the dam is in the proper conditional status.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, I could definitely go back and make an edit, you know, to differentiate that a little better.
That would be helpful because it, it seems like those are contradicting everything else. There's, I have a lot of other questions, which I guess I could probably just go through and maybe put them in an email.
You can send them to me, yeah.
Yeah. I just finished it this morning, so I didn't have a chance to write an email. But I will, I will get those to you, but that was the one that was probably the most concerning to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other questions or comments? Everyone understands the motion. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Once again, counsel. Counsel, we will move to a public hearing. I have been watching the screen. There haven't been, I haven't observed anyone drop off. We had a public hearing that was warned for 7:00 PM. This is the interim zoning revisions to revise density, parking, and housing requirements. You had the memorandum and the information in your packet. So, the hearing is open, Nicholas or Janet or Dave or all of you? Uh, so the hearing is open, Nicholas or Janet or Dave or all of you?
Janet, Janet and Dave.
Good evening, councilors. Um, the Planning Commission and I have been working diligently to follow the changes that came out of S one hundred for zoning. And um, we are in a housing crisis, so we feel that these changes not only will address uh the um, some of the statutory changes we need to make, but um helps with uh the need for housing in an interim zoning. Uh, so maybe quickly before we get into the meat of it, and I don't want to go on too long, um interim zoning means it is uh, it is not the full blown process, which requires two public hearings. It is a hearing held by the late, thank you, legislative body, which is you folks. And uh, it's literally what we call a one and done. We're asking you to pass interim zoning, which would make it become effective for two years. And within, within that two years, we would then come back and complete probably other zoning edits through the full blown process. So that being said, what we're asking is uh, meeting the requirements that say we must have at least five housing units per acre. So on our dimensional table, that's why our residential zoning district drops from one dwelling unit for every ten thousand eight hundred square feet to one dwelling unit for every eight thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet. Uh, so that's a, that's a change that we just plain need to make. And that will help with housing in some of our uh residential zoning districts. We adjusted the parking. Uh, the parking for residential is um, it's a very weird old formula that is based on the number of bedrooms and the number of whatever. And so it is one parking uni, one parking space required for every dwelling unit. So there's no, you need one, and then if you've got three bedrooms, it's point four for every additional bedroom. Between uh S one hundred and our zoning, we're going to make that much easier for our people to figure things out. And my office to quite frankly, address those questions. And then the biggest change that we have come up with, um, we decided that it would be beneficial to allow for up to six residential dwelling units in any zoning district, provided they're on city water and sewer and they meet all of the other dimensional requirements out of zoning. And that's parking and that's trash and that's um their curb cut. It's a whole myriad of things. So those are the changes that we're asking you all to consider tonight and pass so that our residents can create more housing and it just makes it a lot easier and uh quite frankly, quicker. And David Sickel is the Chair of the Planning Commission. He's been a member of the commission for uh many years. There are other members on uh as well. I can't see that far away, but. Yeah, we've got other members here. Um, we've, like I said, we've deliberated a lot and uh all of us feel that this is a worthy thing for you all to please consider.
So just a clarifying question, the intention of the planning commission, we're doing it through the interim zoning just so we can get the ball rolling, but the intention of the planning commission is for eventually this stuff to be permanently included. Of course, just wanted to be trying to.
Yeah, and and we, you know, we have a grant to do the update, but we haven't been able to get a consultant to uh use that money, but there are other things that could be done, but uh they don't, they're not necessarily required by state statute and uh they're a little more complicated. A good example is uh many planning commissioners would be happy not to have any parking requirements with buildings, but that would require uh on-street parking year round. And so until the winter parking ban is is addressed, that's really not something that makes sense. It, just as an example of of some of the other things, or another example is uh the setbacks for houses. You know, my example is in the R four district, I think is a setback fifteen or twenty feet?
Uh, sixteen.
Sixteen feet. And my neighborhood is an R four district and I walk down the street and if there were a house put in that had a sixteen foot setback, it would look very strange because all the houses have porches that are probably eight feet from the right of way. So those are things that we would want to study uh as, that's just as an example as well.
And procedurally, counsel, I should have mentioned that if there's anyone in the audience who is here specifically to participate in the hearing, uh, we do have a sign in sheet somewhere, don't we? We don't. We'll make one really quick. May I have a piece of paper, counselor? Uh, there's a sign in sheet right here, so if you could sign in, I would appreciate that. And if you're, and if you're here to participate and you're joining us online, uh, just put your hand up and uh we'll call on you and the clerk. We'll, we'll take your name down. So thank you for that. So counsel, uh, just like I said, some housekeeping matters. Um, basically, uh we're, we're able to affect this uh interim zoning under twenty-four VSA, section forty-four fifteen and land use laws. Uh, and essentially what the council needs to find is we may, the Berry City Council may adopt interim bylaws regulating land development in all or part of the municipality in order, in order to protect the public health, safety and general welfare and provide for orderly and physical economic growth. So um with that, uh.
Mr. Mayor, there is a hand raised.
I'm sorry?
There's a hand raised.
Yes, Mr. Anthony.
Is there a two minute?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had Mr. Anthony. I grabbed him online. Mr. Anthony, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you very much. I wish to uh support the adoption of interim zoning. And with it, uh, the reference to the revision of the meaning of substantial improvement, uh, the whole issue of on-street parking and whatnot is uh a time for a longer discussion. Uh, and Dave Sitchell knows my views on uh the winter parking uh ban, et cetera, but in any case, I support the uh adoption of interim zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll make sure to get you down as a participant as well. So thank you for that. So um, what was the vote at the DR, at the Planning Commission? Was it unanimous folk?
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous folk, okay.
And one thing I would mention, you know, in terms of interim zoning is there are a number of locations in the city where there are buildings existing that have space for additional units. Or without changing the footprint other than maybe a fire escape or some life safety improvement that can't add those units now because our density requirement does not allow that. So this is, this change is something that could bring some units on pretty quick.
Right. And, you know, Janet, I had discussions with both you and David and other planning commission members about, you know, reservations regarding uh loosening the parking requirements. But I think at this point in time, um, I would be okay with having to do some parking enforcement and some towing as opposed to having folks not have a place to live. So, you know, when we find ourselves uh in this housing crisis where and in a city where there are a number of flood areas where being able to being able to develop more densely going forward only makes sense. And for the city, it's, it's, it's a necessity. You know, we have to do this. So um, you know, so I, I do think that there'll be more parking issues. Those can be stressful on a neighborhood. But we'll, we'll figure it out.
Change that's being made in the interim zoning is strictly to comply with what the statute requires.
Right.
Statute doesn't allow requiring of more than one parking space per unit.
But when we used to talk about, I said a number of years ago, and we used to talk about a vibrant downtown. I used to look at people and say, my goal is to create parking problems in the downtown, is to create a downtown where you can't find a place to park. We're that busy. So careful what you wish for. So is there anyone else who wishes to be heard uh regarding this matter? Yes, sir?
I just want to note, Mayor, that um, and I don't know if it, she was listed, but uh Commissioner, Planning Commissioner Becky Wig is on too. So I don't, just for the clerk for the minutes.
Okay, and uh, Reilly Munier, did, were you uh wishing to be counted as a participant or did you have something to say?
I think that's just a mouse.
Oh, participant, got it. Okay, we got you down. Thank you very much. With that, counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve this interim zoning. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? And do you mind if we expand your motion in terms of, if we take a little artistic license with your motion? I understand your intent. Your intent was, was to find that uh, that the interim zoning uh interim zoning was necessary in order to protect the public health, safety and general welfare and provide for orderly, physical and economic growth.
Yes, but whatever it says in that memo is exactly what I meant.
Okay, thank you. So so moved and that was okay with the second over, correct? And everyone understood that motion. Fantastic.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done. I know it's uh been a long haul and this is a little anticlimactic for as much time as you put into it.
Really will help with housing for sure.
Yeah.
You know, we discover illegal apartments all the time and this makes it easier to say to someone, now, now you just need to get your permits, not now you need to remove the apartment you thought you should put in.
Right. Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, counsel, we're going to move on to item F on the agenda. This is the first reading in public hearing warned for seven ten PM revisions to substantial damage threshold and underground tank. I believe that shouldn't just say underground. It's warned as underground tank requirements for the flood hazard area regulations. It was tank requirement. Yeah, but it was above ground as well that we were regulating, correct? No? With anchoring?
Yeah, and anchoring. It's the, the paragraph in the flood hazard regulations says fuel tanks.
Gotcha.
It encompasses, you're right, both underground and above.
It's underground and above, yeah. Yeah, that's what I, that's what I read. So counsel, this is our first reading and uh public hearing. Again, this is something um our threshold, which was established in fifteen years ago?
Eight, it's one.
Oh, eight, thank you. Yeah, two thousand and eight established a threshold for substantial damage of fifty thousand dollars uh within Berry City or fifty percent of the fair market value of the building, whichever was less. So obviously, when you establish a number in two thousand and eight, flash forward to flooding in two thousand twenty-three, people were very easily hitting the threshold, even though the, that threshold of damage didn't even come close to fifty percent of the value of the building and it precluded in it. So we looked at uh the state statute. So what we're doing here is we're simply making our local ordinance consistent with state statute. It's fifty percent of the fair market value of the building in order to establish that threshold, substantial damage threshold. Yes.
So that would make it harder for someone to get a buyout, right?
Not necessarily.
No, you could have no damage and get a buyout.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is, this is about um, if you're substantially damaged, then you have to elevate. If you're substantially damaged and then you go and improve your structure, your improvement was fifty percent of the assessed value or fifty thousand, whichever was less. So if someone's value of their home is higher, this allows them to be on a better track to make improvements to their, to their home before they hit this fifty percent. I mean, that might take somebody one year if it's the fifty thousand dollar threshold. Um, if they're at the fifty percent threshold, it might take three to five years to all the improvements they make gets them to that magic number.
Just doesn't let people fix their house sometimes when that's the best route forward instead of saying all of a sudden you've got to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to raise it up and do all this other stuff so you can replace your furnace or something like that.
Questions, counsel? So you had uh, you had the revised ordinance uh and flood, flood hazard area regulations uh in your packet. Don't know if you have any questions about that.
So what would be another appraisal? There's on page thirty-seven. Four, it says.
That would allow somebody who thought that the city's tax appraisal maybe was low since we reappraised not for a long time, they could get a separate appraisal and use that as an alternative to come up with that value to take fifty percent.
We changed that and to but, BUT.
Okay, thanks.
That read a little awkward when I, when I read it. Um, it says, should it say BUT instead of AND? You know, but does not preclude an appraisal as opposed to.
An appraisal from being used.
Right. We, because it says we shall use the assessed value of a structure, shall.
In general.
I'm, right. But does not preclude an appraisal from being used. I was trying to, you know, does that in the instance?
You could change and to but.
Means the same thing?
Mean the same thing. It might be a little clearer.
Got you. Okay, that was the only question I had.
Oh, okay.
Janet and David. It was, it was the shall where it says you shall use the appraised value. It seemed like you couldn't. Unless you put in.
Before it just said, that's what's being used. This is adding a sentence to allow, the intention is to allow somebody to present an alternative.
Okay, same thing.
Mr. Mayor, Peter.
Representative Anthony.
Yes, Mr. Anthony?
Uh, yes, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just would point out that, uh, well, two things. Well, our ordinance says shall use the appraised value, the overarching obligation of our appraisal. And you hear this from a person who did uh appeals uh for property valuation review. The overall arching is that that appraisal reflects market value. And so the fact that we have not reappraised for twenty years, didn't have an appraiser, uh, appraiser for roughly a decade, that leaves us really no alternative but to try to uh shoehorn, if you will, or uh accommodate that history with the requirements under the statute. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Yes?
So back to the and or the but, I think just on a personal list, like looking at this, when it, if it says but does not uh preclude an appraisal from being used, I think that's just more straightforward language for people to understand. Uh, just looking at it as a continued sentence as opposed to just saying that you could also use. Um, I just think the and versus the but, I hate to say, but I do believe that using but in there would give people the option or the thought of the option that they could then obtain another appraisal as opposed to just kind of being thrown in there.
I appreciate that and I'll, I'll tell you, I learned uh early on in college, you never use the word but. You always use the word and. So how about we compromise and say, in general, the city will use the assessed value and does not preclude because will, shall, must, those are heavy duty statutory words.
My mother said no if, ands or buts.
I mean, we know what, we, we know what the intent is, so we do, we will have a second reading before.
Yes, we will.
We will have a second reading, so I wouldn't, you know, I think we all agree on, on what the intent is. So take a poll in the office, Janet, see what people say.
With all your statutes.
And, and figure, because I, you know, we all understand what you're trying to do, so I wouldn't consider that, you know, that, that wouldn't that wouldn't queer a, a second, you know, reading. So uh, let's see, moving on, counsel, any other? Yes?
Just one last, I'm, this maybe feels a little dry in the council chambers, but I'm really, really happy to see this. This is going to make a real difference for people whose houses were hit very hard. And they can do things like the example you mentioned earlier. They can replace a furnace without having to go through the substantial damage process and, and spend two hundred thousand dollars to elevate their, their house. It really was that stark of a difference for some people. And I really think this again, feel, maybe feels a little dry in the conversation, but this is the kind of thing that's going to make an immediate and genuine difference. So I appreciate that the planning commission has, has brought it to us.
Well, and Janet, you saw firsthand, um, you know, immediately after the twenty-three flood, there were all kinds of people who were hitting that threshold. And folks who had homes that, yes, were in flood prone areas, but the water has never gotten to the first floor. Water's always been in the basement. So they made the decision, I'm finally going to relocate my furnace. So, they made the decision, I'm finally going to relocate my furnace, you know, to the first floor. I'm going to relocate my electrical panel. I'm not going to have anything in my basement. And yet, because that, the total quote came out to be fifty-six thousand dollars, they were told, you have to elevate your home, and they were kind of stuck. And we all sit, sat here agreeing that that was not the intent of the council in two thousand and eight, when they set that fifty thousand dollar threshold. We simply failed to adjust that fifty thousand dollar number for inflation.
The other problem is, there's been a second flood.
Right.
All that stuff, money that got spent the first flood, counts towards that fifty thousand, or towards that substantial damage. So, yeah, it is a big deal.
Flood and inflation.
So, likewise, good job, very good job. Yes?
So, um, on page forty, B, fuel storage tanks lo, located below, I don't know, it's actually the A. So, don't we want all fuel storage tanks who are in the flood plain elevated? Isn't the flood hazard area just the floodway? Or am I wrong?
We want them all anchored. We want them all tied down. In the, uh, in Irene, I was in Montpelier, and I can remember seeing, and you folks here in Berry probably saw, people's fuel tanks loading right down the river. Um, we don't have an ordinance that requires our fuel dealers to properly anchor anybody's fuel tanks into the ground, to the side of the building, anything. Or requires their fill pipes, in their, uh, what I call the whistle pipe, high enough that it wouldn't take on water either. So, what this does, the intent is, is to be sure that we're talking only in the flood plain, which includes the floodway. Tanks are properly anchored, and this, this gives us some teeth to start really getting after our fuel dealers, to say, you've got to figure out how to tie this to the building, anchor it into the ground, and elevate your fill pipe, so those tanks don't float down the river.
Okay.
And we do have, uh, within, I think there is a process for a variance, because there, there are some tanks that are, most tanks, I would say ninety-five percent of them are fairly easily anchored. I mean, you can do it with a two-by-two concrete block, and, you know, i- it's not hard to do. There are some that are, in fact, more problematic than others, where anchoring them is a challenge, but you can always figure out some way to do it. But, you know, we do, we do allow for a little bit of latitude. If it's something that's easily done, fuel, oil providers and propane providers better figure out a way to do it, because they're going to have to. Anything else, counsel? Okay, then the most, the appropriate motion would be to, uh, consider the, um, it's actually our flood, it's, I keep calling it what it's on the agenda, but it's actually simply our flood hazard regulations.
Flood hazard area.
That's the amendment. I'm sorry?
Flood hazard area regulations.
Thank you. Having been read the first time, and schedule a second hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second. Moved and seconded. And you just, and I'll let the clerk figure out when that second hearing will be. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries.
Thank you, counselors.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we are at, um, item eight G on the agenda. This is to review the proposed changes, uh, to the minimum housing ordinance. Counselor Stockwell?
Yes. So, I have, went over the minimum housing ordinance, and I looked at other hous, housing ordinances, and I have proposed some changes, mostly around making places a little safer, and a little easier to enforce the regulations. So, those are the primary changes. My changes are in yellow, and staff changes are in blue. And I would agree with all the staff changes, except for the one about raising the fine to a thousand dollars, because you can't by state statute, do a fine above eight hundred.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone wish to, I know there's a number of folks here. One of the changes that the, so you had no issue with striking your, um,
Y D U.
Definition of rental unit and deferring to the staff, because we are likely, the city is likely going to adopt a short-term rental unit, uh, ordinance in probably the next two or three months.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so you're okay with striking, so you'd withdraw that change? And then Nicholas, do you have a comment, uh, where you recommended a one thousand dollar fine? Council, Stockwell's contention that, uh, the maximum fine is eight hundred dollars per, per offense?
Uh, Counselor Stockwell's probably right on that. Um, we'll, we'll research that to, to verify. I have no reason, I think she's, she's.
Okay, so we'll, we're going to change that to eight hundred?
And I would say the other thing is, um, you know, I noted in the memo that, um, we're, you know, we would share this with the city attorney. We haven't yet, because we would want it to see that this is a, you know, it's a, it's a frequently-used ordinance, and so we want to make sure we're getting the right direction. And if that's what we get tonight, we'll make sure, we'll share it with the city attorney. One thing Janet and I had talked about is, there's provisions in charters about raising fees generally. So, I think, just so Counselor Stockwell's aware, we would make sure that those changes are not precluded by a charter change first. But generally speaking, the intent would be to, to raise them to the levels that are presented here, if it's allowed by charter.
And I, I apologize, counsel, under seven sixteen, I, I had cited an earlier prev, that would also, so, keeping the current language, which Counselor Stockwell agreed with, uh, would also affect exemptions under seven dash sixteen, in addition to the, the other citation that I was making. Counselor, Counselor Wasack, do you have a question?
I was just going to sense, we, I would just suggest that we just send everything here to the city attorneys for review, and then take action after that.
Yeah, I, I had questions about, um, I mean, the heating section was, um, expanded substantially. I mean, I think we have, you can't get a C O, you can't get a certi, certificate of occupancy if you don't have a functioning furnace, can you?
I, I don't believe so. And Nick and, uh, and Keith are online, but, so step in if I misspeak, but I believe that's correct.
Yeah, and I think there is, you know, I think we've had this discussion before. There's nothing in, you know, we have rental units in the city where, um, the landlord heats the entire building. There, there is one heating plant, uh, and the landlord heats the entire building. We have, um, rental units in the city where there are multiple heating units, and the landlord provides the heating appliance, the tenant provides the fuel. They, they pay their own utilities. There was a section in here about uh, heating systems being, shall be able to maintain a room temperature of at least sixty-five degrees in all habitable rooms, uh, kitchens and bathrooms. The maintenance of a, of required heating level shall be accomplished without overheating one room as a means of meeting minimum temperature requirements for adjacent rooms. The temperature may be red, and the requirement shall be met at a point three feet above floor level and three feet from an exterior wall. So, define, but there's no definition of overheating one room. What is that definition? Is it seventy-five degrees? Is it eighty degrees? I live in a house that was built a hundred years ago. We have one thermostat and a two-pipe steam system. The house is very comfortable. It's, Larry, you rebuilt my furnace for me. I need you back. And, but it's amazing that, but on very, very cold days, there is one thermostat in the dining room, but on very, very cold days, if, uh, if it's twenty degrees below zero, it'll be seventy degrees in the majority of the house, but the front foyer will be about sixty-two. It'll be a little chilly in there. So, I just question, you know, what this means and how the city would enforce it, and who's going to enforce it? And, and, and most importantly, what the definition of, you know, overheating one room.
This is taken from the federal housing quality standards, and it's their minimum housing standard, so that's what it's taken from. And I can look it up and see what they define, but I can imagine that's like, you have one room that's sixty, and one room that's eighty. That would be overheating, but I don't know that, but I would look it up.
Yeah, that would be, that would be the third floor of my house in the vestibule.
Well, you have a lovely house, and that's fine, but this is for people who are renting, and who may have, who do have fewer choices.
Yeah, and, and I think, um, you know, we would talk to code enforcement, and I, and I believe that, um, this is consistent with what the state fire marshal's enforced to, and so, our first, I think, probably, one of Nick's first call would be to find out how they're, how they enforce that particular standard. I don't know if Nick's had the chance to do that, but I, I imagine that there's a, there's a standard that we would, um, we would get advice and guidance on.
Mr. Heath? And if you, if you want to comment to the council, would you mind coming up to the table here? Is that okay? All right, that would, yep, you, yep, you, you sure can. We'll recognize you both.
Well, thank you. All right. Well, the reason I came tonight is probably, this is for about two reasons, and this is one of them, right here. And what it is, is you see with the housing stock here in Berry, it's the oldest in the country. And bottom line is that, what I wrote here at the end of this was reasonable, be reasonable. Because you see, when you start talking about sixty-five degrees in every room at three feet off the floor and all that sort of thing, because of the way the heating systems are built in these old houses, that's impossible to do. That's not going to ever happen. And so, I would say this, and that is that, if you're going to enact this rule, then you've got to be reasonable about it. And being reasonable means that you have to be able to, let's say, a ten-degree differential, or something like that, see? Because that's going to happen in all these old houses, and the only way you're ever going to get, what you're asking for right here is have individual room temperature. No house, and, but, there's very few houses in the city of Berry that are going to have individual room temperature, with exception, maybe electric heat. That'd be the only ones that would have it. So, you see, it's okay, I agree with it, that it should be habitable. Don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to say that the houses shouldn't be habitable. But on the other hand, you've got to be reasonable about this business of sixty-five degrees in every corner of every building, e- every room. That's not going to happen, and not, especially the way some of the heating systems, you just demonstrated, two-pipe steam or one-pipe steam, either one. You know, there's going to be rooms there that aren't going to be right to sixty-five. If, if you set your thermostat at sixty-five or seventy, whatever you set it at, there's going to be a variation in those rooms. And so, when, when inspecting, because trouble is, you leave it like this, what that means is everybody fails. So, it is. And so, it, it means that, it seems we'd have to pick a reasonable differential. So, let's say that you take the one thermostat that you have in your living room there, and you set that at seventy. Now, if you find that one of the back rooms back in there, it's, it's sixty-two or sixty-five, is that reasonable? And that's what you can expect here in the city of Berry. Because of the way the buildings are built, that's because the heating system's the way they are. And so, this is just an ideal system, you know, that, that was going, that would qualify with this. So, what are your thoughts?
Honestly, uh, I like definitions. I, I don't know, um, I don't know what overheating one room means. Some people like it when it's.
We can have two people. I don't know why we can't have three.
Some people like it seventy-five degrees, and some people like it sixty-eight degrees. I mean, I think we all probably fight with family members in our, in our homes, some will like it warm. So, I don't, I don't know what over, that's, that's the only issue I have with this, uh, Mr. Heath, personally, is, I, I would like a definition of what overheating means. If there's, um, a ten-degree temperature variation, that, that seems like, okay, you might hit the threshold. If it's a six-degree temperature variation, sixty-five in one area of a home versus seventy-one in another area, I don't know that that's, that would hit my threshold of, um, overheating, but I'm not.
I think what they mean that, um, on overheating, is because this happens in a lot of buildings. That is, if you want the back bedroom to be sixty-five, the one thermostat you're talking about is going to be eighty-five in the living room. See, in order for that to happen. And, and I think that's what they mean, to try to help you there, and what you're thinking, or what, what the, what, what your threshold is, or what, what your overheating means. Overheating means, if you've got a back bedroom that's, that's not insulated as well, doesn't have storm windows on, or the various things, in order to get that back bedroom up where you want it, you've got to wind that up in the living room to eighty-five degrees. And that's what the, that's what overheating means. That's the, in my mind, that's what they mean here. And so, now, but, and, and I appreciate all that, but the only thing is, now we have to talk about what's reasonable when, in order to get that ba, back bedroom up to sixty-five, how much would you, should you have to crank up that living room thermostat? Should, is it reasonable to think you had to turn it up to seventy to get that sixty-five? And that's what you're going to get, and, and all, the majority of the house in the city of Berry, that's what you're going to get, see? And so, that's, and I'll, does that help?
No.
No, okay.
Because it's not, because it's not written in the ordinance, so you were just saying, well, that's what I, and I agree with you. I think everything that you just said is reasonable. But if it's not written specifically in an ordinance, then our building inspectors cannot enforce it.
You're right.
There, there, it has to be literally written into the ordinance, and that's why I'm not a big fan of seven point three. I absolutely agree that a building owner, landlord, anyone renting property, has a responsibility to provide a safe and functional heating system. But I think when you start getting into regulating temperature, I mean, minimum temperature certainly. And that's why we've got seven, you know, that's why we, well, no, actually, we don't. The outside temperature falls to, uh, heating facility system shall be provided when the outside temperature is less than fifty-five degrees Fahrenheit. Again, and, and I'm just one person, not my house. When it gets to be sixty-four, the heat's going on. I, I, we don't wait for it to get to sixty.
See my jacket?
Fifty, fifty-five is, is pretty cold.
You're right.
So.
That language is from the state, the rental housing inspection form.
Right.
So, and the state does not define a reasonable overheating.
Mr. Mayor, before we go too much further, I wonder if our guests could make sure they state their names for the record, because it's getting.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Heath, sorry.
My name's Herbert Heath.
Thank you.
Larry Hodger.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, what I wanted to say is, we all, there's already state rules, regulations, as far as heat, that, as far as the heat goes, I believe if it's like ten below zero, you have to, uh, uh, in a, a heating appliance has to maintain ten, temperature of at least fifty-five degrees in that unit. That's, that's a requ, requirement. That's the bare-bones minimum. I've worked in, as you know, Tom, I've done heating for, I did t, heating for like twenty years. I've worked in buildings, one of them was a old Milne, uh, property across from Silver, uh, Summer Street Auto. That building had two massive boilers in it. They were steam. And there was two thermostats on the first floor. Now, that was three units up. Now, this is back when Milne's owned it, and I started taking care of their maintenance. Sold it, the first-floor apartment was totally empty, and that's right where the thermostat was. With, well, anyways, it, it was a total disaster. So, anyways, after Steve Terrell bought the building, we ended up putting a new boiler in. We converted that old steam to hot water, so everybody had their own thermostat. But you do have some si, uh, situations in these old buildings where, you know, you would have that problem. But I would hope by now, all these buildings have been insulated, windows, better heating systems. And, and what I want to ask is, why are we even having this conversation right now? I mean, is there that many complaints that, at this time and place that?
There's absolutely no one who's going to come forward who has a place to live and complain.
Pardon me?
That's not true. That's not true.
I, I need you to speak up.
Okay, there, there's no one who has a house that I know, who's renting an apartment, who is willing to come forward and complain, because they don't want to lose their place.
Yeah. I mean, is it, we, we're going to, we all having this discussion because of one situation, or?
Oh, no, no, it's, that's what I'm, I, uh, most of my friends work in housing, so this is what I know from them, talking with, they manage people who are in housing apartments, and so, they've told me that no one is willing to risk their placement by coming forward to say, oh, we don't have heat. Now, you guys are probably not those folks. You're not those landlords. But the, but the code enforcement folks need some tools for people who are not reliable.
The tools are already in place.
Let's use this tool. Let's use this tool.
Folks, folks, we speak one at a time, and we use our inside voice. All right. Thank you. There you go, we'll all get along. It's all good. It's fine.
Again, I don't know, is there that many complaints at this, this time where, you know, you've got capstone that's been out there, insulated?
know, you've got capstone that's been out there insulating properties? I'm, you know, I just can't imagine there's gotta be that much of a problem in the heating where, where tenants are freezing. And if they are, we have code enforcement, and they should be addressing, they should be going and, and talking to that landlord and try to figure out what's going on. I mean, it's not rocket science. It's just that, I just, I just don't understand why do we have to change it in ordinance? We have code enforcement. If code enforcement isn't addressing these issues and helping the landlord try to figure it out, then I guess, to me, the code, code enforcement is failing.
I think code enforcement needs more tools.
So, uh, this is, and I brought a couple copies for you guys. This is the Vermont, the rental housing inspection form, which is a statewide rental housing checklist. It's twelve pages long, clear yes or no. All of that, that heating language was taken directly from this document. This is truly the only piece that I think needs to be changed about this, this, well, at least that second half of the ordinance. At this point, the inspection process is completely discretionary. And I think that there needs to be a clear checklist, because right now, you're talking about violations and fines and all sorts of things, when code enforcement can go into a unit and violate you for whatever they want, and it's completely up to their discretion, and that doesn't work for anyone, right? Because I could hand this, if a tenant thinks that their unit's substandard, I could hand this to them and say, cool, go through this, tell me what's, where the deficiency is, right? And, and I've done that before. I had a, anywhere else in the state, this is the form that is used. And it is a very clear checklist, so everybody's on the same page. Code enforcement, the tenant, the landlord. This is minimum standards. So why is it that the city of Berry doesn't have this? We have an inspection program, but we have no clear set of inspection guidelines.
I believe that you do, but that'd be a question for code enforcement.
I have asked that question, and they fail to answer it.
Yeah, we had a meeting a month and a half ago about if we were...
And I think everything in here is exceptionally reasonable. And I will toss a few of these out here. It covers all minimum housing standards, if closely follows the federal housing quality standards, with the exception of a couple of things like the heating requirements, because obviously, you know, southern Florida isn't gonna have the same heating requirements as we have up here. But this, it's pretty comprehensive.
Yes, could I ask the code enforcement officer to address this? I, I, we've gone through this, we went through this form at that meeting a month ago. Nick can repeat the answer. You know, I just wanna be, you know, I, I think he's been doing a great job, is my, I just wanna make sure that the record reflects that. I think that he does a great job enforcing the codes that we have, and I think that the meeting that we had with landlords, the concerns were with the code. And if you have problems with the code, those are different conversations, but I think Nick is doing a great job enforcing the code we have. But he can address the specific question about this checklist, because we did cover that at that meeting. So Nick, do you mind explaining that?
Absolutely. That checklist is the surface of your inspection. If you look at page four of the residential rental housing health and safety code that was produced by the state of Vermont, adopted December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, on page four, it acknowledges the adoption of the Vermont Fire and Safety Building Code, two thousand and fifteen addition, to which then adopts NFPA one and one oh one, which then references about a hundred different books or more of code that we have to go through. When you look at that inspection form, there's other items that, when you look at it, it's just the surface being scratched. When a health inspector from the Division of Fire Safety comes out to look at that, they end up referring anything else to Division of Fire Safety inspectors, Assistant State Fire Marshals to come out and follow up. No different than what our current city ordinance states of our adoption of the Vermont Fire and Safety Building Code, as well as NFPA.
Thanks, Nick.
Any other questions, council?
So, what I am hearing him say is that current building code is our rental housing minimum standard in the city of Berry. That is what he's...
That's, that is what he said.
That is what he is saying, and that is unrealistic.
It's unrealistic, impossible.
Negative. That, that is not what I've said. There is two codes when it comes to, or three codes that we live in when it comes to rental housing. One is one and two family, which is a chapter of it by itself, chapter twenty-four, and then chapter thirty-one for existing apartment buildings, is which we've lived the most of our life in. Unless any of our projects from the flooding get off the ground, we start building new buildings, and then we get to get into the new chapter. Everything else falls right under existing codes.
That is not what you are inspecting to. There, there needs to be a clear inspection guideline, a checklist, so that everyone is on the same page. Because at this point, it is up to your discretion, and you are coming in and violating people for things that are absolutely ludicrous. Everybody needs to be able to...
So, folks, this discussion is, is going a little sideways. I mean, we're here to discuss this document that was proposed, and it's sort of morphing into an overall discussion about our, I mean...
No, my...
Code enforcement.
My issue, well, well, that's part of, that's part of this, this ordinance, though. And what I am saying, what I am advocating for, is that there is a clear tool for code enforcement, right? Because wouldn't it be great if you could go into any one of your apartments and go through this checklist prior to a code enforcement inspection, and know where your deficiencies are, so that you could remedy those?
Yep.
But right now, as a landlord, you can't do that, can you?
I don't.
Maybe you haven't had these inspections.
I don't. I have.
So, the rest of us, though, we can't take this and go through our units. And, and I have not had an inspection, because I've said I'm not doing it until they have a tool in place where I can do a pre-inspection checklist, right? But I know other landlords that have had, have used this tool, and they've also used the self-checklist that's on the city website, and are being violated for things that are not on either one of these lists. And that is what the problem is, is that there's not a clear inspection form, right?
Yes, council.
And I don't, none of us are saying that we want our apartments to be substandard or anything like that. We just want a very clear guideline of what is being inspected.
So, it sounds like we're all saying the same thing, but my question is, is does, how does this work in other communities? We're not the first community with rental housing units that need to be inspected.
This is how it works.
So, I'm just curious why we're...
Actually, in different towns, different, there are different tools.
Right. So, I'm just, I'm just curious how, how we, it sounds like, Sam, you're, what you've taken is some of the same language, as I'm looking at this. It's similar language. So, I, I mean, but it sounds like this document that you've presented, Sam, is trying to give more tools. And what I'm hearing you say is, you would like very clear direction about...
I want a very clear tool.
Right.
But it's slightly different questions. Like, this is about the minimum housing ordinance. What are, what are the rules for rental housing? And what is code enforcement using, which I think they do have very clear tools, and that's a separate discussion.
They don't have clear tools.
Yeah, but that's not what we're discussing right now. We could set up another session to talk about that.
What I'd like to do is, I, I'd like to give Nick, Copping, and the manager the opportunity to respond. Now, they may not respond this evening. These, they're all good questions. This was on the agenda as, not adoption, it was on the agenda as reviewing proposed changes, not adopt the proposed changes. So I think, Sammy, you've asked some good questions, but I think in fairness, we have to give our inspector, the ability, and manager, the ability to respond.
Yeah, and, and I'm...
And I'm sure they'd be happy to, and, and I suspect this will be a, another longer discussion. Yes, Larry?
So, I had my building inspected down on Air Street. I was in Florida, so unfortunately, I wasn't there. And Nick and Arthur Young went through the building, and you know, you know, the thing is, I just think they went a little too far on their inspection. I don't know, maybe they figured they have to, you know, write up something. But when they're going in my basement, and they're writing up for a little, a switch cover that's got a little nick in it, my panels aren't fully covered, it's saying, you know, I'm just saying, they're going a little bit overboard. And there's no doubt about it. I mean, nitpicking, some of the stuff they're nitpicking. So when I bought that building twenty-four years ago, twenty-four years ago, Tom, I went through every unit, rewired it, plum, heating, roof, windows, doors, on and on. I spent years going through that building. And, you know, when I did the work, whatever I did, it met code at that time. It was inspected by Berry City, inspected by insurance. And now we have these new inspectors, and I just think that they're, they're not, they're not using common sense, and they're trying to push the latest and greatest codes on these old buildings. Now, there's such a thing as grandfathered, but we'll call it existing. So, you know, deal is, if you think you're going to enforce all the codes, well, I tell you what, I, I could, I can give you a list that they're missing an awful lot. So what, what gives them the authority to, to, to enforce these codes, but not all the codes? Because it's, I'll tell you what, it'd be near, and it would break, it would break a landlord. Trying to get somebody, a plumber, electrician in there, a carpenter, you know, the thing is, what this city is doing, they're putting a lot of burden, not only on these inspectors, but they're putting a lot of burden on the landlords. That is unjust. I, out of those sixteen violations, I haven't got to all of them, because, you know, I've got other priorities. And, and what they wrote me up for isn't one of them. So now what you're telling me is, you wanna threaten me with, you're gonna penalize me and threaten me with fines and stuff like that? You know, and you're gonna, up, what, is that supposed to intimidate me a little more? You know, it just, I'm sorry, but it, it really irritates me. And I've talked to landlords, several of them, and said, they've had it with Berry City. They've got it, they're selling, they're getting out. But, you know, and this is getting back to increasing your fines. You know, what is that, gonna intimidate us a little more, give you more leverage? You know, this is what's gonna happen, is you're, you, th- these codes are going to force landlords to throw their hands up, say, I'll leave it, I will leave this apartment empty. And it's already happened. I've seen it. I, you know, I've been a landlord for thirty-six years. I used to do a lot of maintenance for landlords. So I've seen a lot. Just, just, you know, I'm just, that's just my view. So, anyways.
Mr. Heath.
Okay, we went, we have thirty-four units here in the city. And I had Nick go through. Nick went through and inspected them all, and Arthur as well. And, and I have to say to you that I think they're reasonable. That's true. And I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing with the fact that he, that Larry and Samantha here, you know, they both have good points. There's no doubt about that. But in my case, my places were just about up to code anyway. And I believe Nick will tell you that. And so I didn't have that much to do, really. And the things that we did, that had to be done, in my case, don't know about the rest of them here, but in my case, were safety issues. Like smoke detectors being in the right place, and all that stuff. And, and we had smoke detectors, but sometimes, well, one of the deals, well, I was just so you're saying that, is outside of your bedrooms, you have to have a carbon and smoke. In some of my cases, I had smoke there in a smoked bedroom as well, so we had to kind of convert some of those things. But as far, but see, I'm all for safety. The bottom line is, when somebody rents from me, I expect them to be safe, and I expect them to be warm, and all those things. And so I have to say that I considered this to be reasonable. I, they, they put me on my toes, not to get, not make me wrong. Because I think out of thirty-four, I think I failed on about thirty-two of them. But they were minor. You know, it wasn't a big deal. And, and I, I like to have it done that way. So that's where I'm at with it. And so, and again, I'm not trying to subtract from what you folks experienced, but I have to say, my experience was good. And, and I want them safe, and I want them is, is safe enough, and the code's adhered to, and there you go. So that's all I have to say about that. And that is, I was, I was pleased about it all. And, you know, it, it was, I had to put handrails on, like, for example, there's inch, you have to have inch and a half round handrails. Now, you go through the city right now, I've done it, I've done it, so I know it's there. And that is, you'll see two-by-fours on these outside stairs. That's what they use for railings? Well, that's no more. Bottom line is, you gotta have a round hand railing. And I devised a way to do that. And so we've got all round handrails. You go by my places, you're gonna see the round hand railings, they're inch and a half in diameter. And, and so that was something. And, and you know, when I, when I go, I have a lot of old people rent from me, and you know, like me, old. And the bottom line is, you can grab that inch and a half a lot easier than you can a two-by-four, there's no doubt about that. And, and so that's an awful lot of handrails. In the city of Berry, gonna have to be changed, that's for sure. But when you ride around from now on, folks, just take a look, and you'll see those outside stairs, the two-by-fours on both sides, see? And, and, but that's not the code anymore. Code is, you have to have round. And so we're gonna see a lot of round railings on around, on the outside stairs. And I've had a lot of compliments from my people who actually live there. And they say, boy, that's a lot nicer to be able to get hold of them stairs, you know, like on, on the inside. Like oftentimes, going up and down the stairs, down cellar. Okay, they used to have a two-by-four, two-by-six on edge. And you've probably seen that, that further railing there. Well, you just simply put a round, round on top of that. And I've had two or three people that I've had do that for, that's pretty exciting for them, you know? In other words, they, they can grip onto it and feel safer, you say. So that's my experience. And so I don't want to think I'm putting, throwing you the wolves or anything like that, but my experience is different than this, than these folks here.
And I have not had an inspection. I'm simply saying, there needs to be a very clear guideline, right? Because, so for this state, state code, it says, do all stairways have handrails that are securely mounted, right? It doesn't care if they're round, it doesn't care if they're, it's a two-by-four, it doesn't care. Is it secure, right? Are you gonna slam into it and fall over? So I just think there needs to be a very, very clear checklist, so that everybody can be on the same page. And I know a lot of landlords who are passing Section Eight inspections on an annual basis, and are failing city minimum housing, and that does not make sense. Just because something is not up to the most current building code does not make it inherently unsafe.
I think Councilor Darren was first.
Anybody go. When my little girl texts me, I, I, even if I'm in a council meeting, I let her know. So any, jump in, anybody.
My comment really is, what I'm hearing is that we need a straight, straightforward, clear-cut plan here on how somebody as a landlord, or as a tenant, or code enforcement for that matter, or a counselor, you know, can look at an apartment and say, look, this would pass the code inspection. I think what I'm hearing from a lot of different people is that we have a lot of codes that need to be enforced. In some cases, they're enforced to a hundred percent extent, in, in one way or another. We've had experiences both positive and negative. But I think a rubric of some sort, and we talked about rubrics earlier, but having a metric in order to, to measure if the apartment is up to code or not is crucial. That we don't have to have these discussions if we have the straightforward language that says, look, we checked this box, we checked this box, we checked this box. Oh, we checked no on this box, so we need to fix this. And that's part of the evaluation. What I'm understanding is that we don't have a clear-cut evaluation process before code enforcement comes in. And that's just what I'm hearing from the conversations this evening, is that the expectations maybe aren't clear across the board between all the parties that are involved. So to have a streamlined document that is just much more clear-cut, that people can understand, can check off some boxes, and say, look, this meets the standard, this meets the standard, this doesn't, okay, so what do I need to do to meet the standard? Just like if I were managing a restaurant, we have the food inspection, we have these things that we know that we have to tailor our, our services to. But what I'm seeing and understanding is that on the, the rental aspect, we don't necessarily have that clear-cut, check-the-box kind of sheet, or multiple sheets, that people can all be on the same page. And that's just my take on it.
Nicholas? Yeah, I, I just, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna know, and I hope that, you know, the council heard you when you, when you all spoke, and I think at no point did anybody say that Nick wrote them up for a violation that didn't exist. There's, I think the problem that people have expressed, especially at the meeting with the landlords we had a couple months ago, is with the code. It's not with Nick enforcing the code. And people may believe that he's enforcing it too rigorously, but I also... And people may believe that he's enforcing it too rigorously, but I also believe people got too comfortable with how the code was being enforced before Nick.
I don't think so at all.
So I just hope that people heard that when you were talking about, well, he dinged you for something on a box and, you know, he dinged you for something else, he still dinged you for something that wasn't out of code? And if, if your house wasn't meeting the basic minimum code in Berry, that's, that's what, you know, I haven't heard anyone give me any documentation or shown any way that Nick and Arthur have incorrectly applied the code. So I think people have issues with the code, which is fine, and that's a, a separate conversation. Um, but I think we need to be very clear for, make sure that we understand that Nick has integrity, Arthur have integrity in the way they do their jobs, and they're not misapplying the code. If people have issues with the code, that's a whole different conversation. But nobody has, at any point, come to my office or come to a meeting and said, here is the smoking gun of Nick misapplying the code. And if anybody does, I beg you to bring it to me, because I will work with Nick and we'll correct it. But I think, I just wanna make sure that the words were, were heard clearly, that it's not a problem with Nick applying the code. The concern people have is with the code itself, which we can talk about at another point. So, thank you. And, and I think Nick should have an opportunity to talk about the rubric. I think, I think most other landlords get along just fine, and I think most other landlords' experience is similar to what Herb described. But Nick, if, do you have anything? I know we talked about the rubric extensively at that meeting. So Nick, do you have anything else to, to add to that?
Not at this time. Uh, to build a rubric that would fit, uh, an inspection of an apartment unit would be a huge undertaking, which, um, is more than just what Sam has in her hands right now.
It doesn't include fire safety for one, right, Nick? Is that, is that accurate?
It doesn't go into the depths of what the fire safety requirements are. Again, when a rental housing inspector for the state comes in, um, they are looking at those items, but then any other fire safety items, they are referring to the Assistant State Fire Marshals to come back out and readdress.
Thanks, Nick.
Yes.
So then the, then the issue is, is what?
Yes. Go ahead, Sam.
So I just wanted to make clear that, here's my reasoning. I wanna make sure that people here who are renting have a good experience renting in Berry. And you may be outstanding landlords, but there are landlords who are not outstanding. And I didn't feel that code enforcement had the, the tools. And when I was working in the field and when I had coworkers in the field, there was never a response from code enforcement prior to Nick and Arthur.
Really?
Well, I'm just, I'm just telling you from my experience.
And my experience is saying that that's not.
Don't, Sam, I recognize people and then they speak, that's how it works.
So what I want is to give code enforcement the tools to keep apartments in good shape. And that people who come to Berry think, oh, I'm living in a, in a city that clearly cares about me. My apartment is taken care of, code enforcement responds quickly, you know, life is good, and the place looks good. The place is maintained well. So those, for me, are, are things that are very important. And the people who are renting do not have any options at this point. That, that's why the homeless population is increasing, because there aren't places to rent. So very few people would come forward, and we wanna make sure that the people who are renting and maybe want to buy, stay in Berry City because it's a good experience for them.
Sam?
There are plenty of apartments in this city that will not even meet the state bare minimum. Okay. As this is written, this current ordinance is written, the current building code and fire safety code is to be applied to rental housing, which is ludicrous. Okay? Why can we not get all units in the city up to this state minimum housing before we try and start instituting a twenty-twenty-three building code? Right? You're telling me that there are, every unit in this city is gonna pass this? No, no. I could probably list half a dozen buildings off the top of my head that couldn't come close. Okay? Let's get everyone on board with passing this before we're trying to get them to comply with current building codes.
You had your hand up, sir?
Sure.
Would you state, state your name for the record and move a little closer to the mic, it would be helpful? Oh, thank you, Herb, appreciate that.
Thank you, take my chair. It's nice, it's nice and warm.
Uh, my name is Colin Doolittle, uh, Berry City resident and, uh, very small-time landlord. Um, I'd, I'd like to address the, um, the, uh, changes that are proposed in, in this minimum housing standard. Um, sorry, I got my notes here. Um, the first one, back to the heating systems. Um, I'm also, I also own a, a heating company. Um, so intimately familiar with many, many buildings in this city. Um, I've been in a lot of apartments in this city, and certainly some of them are extremely substandard. And I wouldn't wish anyone living there that, that experience. And I would agree that, um, up until Nick and Arthur, um, code enforcement in this city was a joke. Um, it, it made my life easier so- sometimes for sure, but, um, it, it, um, it allowed what I, what I thought, um, some pretty substandard conditions to exist. And I was gonna be embarrassed to, to own those, own those buildings. Um, but specifically to the heating systems here, um, when these buildings were built, they all had central heating systems with heat emitters in every single room in the house for the most part. Twenty, thirty, forty years ago, we started moving towards propane space heaters, towards electric baseboard heaters. Um, now we ended up with a single space heater in one room of a, of a five-room unit. Um, there's no way to heat all those rooms evenly. I see it all the time, someone turn, 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 turns the heat up in one room to get heat in the other room. It's a much cheaper way to heat your home, so it's saving landlords money, it's also saving tenants money who have to pay for their heat. Tenants much rather pay for a Renai propane heater instead of trying to fill up a tank full of oil repeatedly on an old steam system. Um, so while everyone deserves to, to be comfortable and, and safe and not, you know, sweating in one room and, you know, and their teeth chattering, teeth chattering, um, in another, um, there, 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 there needs to be some, some reasonable combination made. Now, as a state, we're moving towards heat pumps. I, I, I'd make a, I'd make a great living installing heat pumps. But again, um, it's, it's impractical and frankly inefficient to install a heat pump in every single room in a one, two, three, four bedroom apartment. Um, I don't do that for, um, you know, my single-family owner-occupied home customers, we put one or two in. Um, and, and it's, you know, to, to put four or five heat pumps in a four or five-room apartment, you're talking, you know, one, twenty thousand dollars easy. Um, so I, I think the, that language is, is problematic in that, um, it's not gonna provide, it's, 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 it's not gonna do much to, to solve a problem and it's gonna cost a huge amount of money at, at the end of the day. Um, about the, um, a less than fifty-five degree temperature thing, um, you know, I think those are already requirements for, for Section Eight housing, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken.
State too.
State requirement.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Um, I think that there does need to be some language in there for tenants who leave their windows open, um, when, uh, which I see all, all the time in, in, uh, in, in buildings that the landlord provides the heat in. I don't provide heat in any of my buildings because of that. If you wanna leave your window open and cost you, you more money, fine. But I understand that a lot of tenants don't have the wherewithal to be paying heating bills, so that's fine, I get it. Um, the other thing I'd like to comment on is, um, Article Five Special Orisons, uh, relocation service. Uh, the, and I, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the addition of due to negligent maintenance practices, um, I'm concerned that that's a subjective, um, standard right there. Um, and I'm also concerned about the owners must demonstrate to the officer satisfaction efforts made to identify relocation accommodations. Again, that's, to me, is a subjective standard. Um, so I, I, I guess I'd like to see those either removed or, or some more, or some clear, clearer language put in there. Um, that's really all I have to say about the changes that I see in here.
Yes, if I may. Um, thank you, Colin. I, I think, um, you know, I, I think the issue about the, um, ambiguity about the overheating is fair. Uh, and I've been, I've been texting with Nick back and forth. And I, I think one thing I would like to do is, uh, have Nick speak to the state about how they enforce this, and perhaps if there is a way they enforce this at the state level that, you know, does that get written in? Or I, I, but I, I agree, I think that it's, it's ambiguous, um, not just for landlords, but I also think about it being ambiguous for Nick in an enforcement capacity. So I think if, um, getting some guidance from the state about how they have applied it, how they go about enforcing it, would be helpful for a next round of conversations on it. Um, I would just say on the, um, the relocation service, that was actually a change that, um, the city had proposed. That wasn't in Counselor Stockwell's initial, um, drafts. And we had done that, because as we looked at the whole ordinance, we know that this isn't, um, you know, we thought this was a, a challenging piece for, for some landlords. Um, so the intent was to, to give a, some, for lack of a better term, benefit of the doubt to the landlords, to give some flexibility. So absent, I just wanna note that absent that, you go back to the old standard, which we think is a little bit, um, more difficult, uh, for the landlord to comply with. Um, so I, I, I can see how there might be some ambiguity, but, um, the intent there is to give some, um, some flexibility for a, a situation that's out of a landlord's control, um, to allow them to not have to be subject to this provision, because we know that, you know, those things can happen, right? Um, so I, you know, it's up to the council how to proceed on it. I just wanna clarify that that was a change that had come from the staff side as we looked at the whole ordinance for the changes. Um, and that's, I think that's, that's the extent of my comment. And Nick, I just wanna give Nick a chance, because he's, you know, obviously knows this way more than me. Nick, anything else, Nick, on those two points?
No, I think, uh, Mr. Manager, you know my stance on the heating one and how that one's gonna be challenging all the way around. Um, for the landlords, I've made no qualms about it with the manager about how I feel about that section and how difficult it's going to be for some landlords to be able to maintain that standard. If it is written the way it is, to say that you can't heat a room a little bit more to get it into another room. Um, I, like the mayor, uh, heat my house in one side with the pellet stove and I have a fan that's blowing the heat to the rest of the house, um, to keep it comfortable. I don't go down in the basement unless I have to, uh, some days. Um, but if it is rules that are being imposed by the state, uh, that we may not have a choice in, we need to know how we can work with it. Um, as for the relocation, it was definitely a attempt to, um, make it easier on the landlords as well and on the tenants. If there's a relocation in our area currently, it is very difficult to relocate someone to a local hotel room. Um, they may not exist. Um, and for a lot of our community that is renting, they may be on foot. So to move them to another town, to a hotel, to then wonder, can they get a bus to come back for maybe their job? Or how are they gonna get to the pharmacy? Or how are they gonna get to a doctor's appointment? How are they gonna get to the store to get their essential needs? Um, we're trying to make that work all the way around for a more holistic approach and not just a, oh, you're not meeting the code, you gotta relocate.
And, and that, Nick, is likely only in extreme cases. I, I've never heard of, um, well, never is a big word. Perhaps once in all of the time that I've lived here, have I ever heard of code enforcement coming in and actually red-tagging a building and saying, everybody's gotta be out now. I mean, even in the most egregious, if Nick walks into a, a, an apartment building and there's not a working smoke detector in the place, what he's likely to say to them is, you have twenty-four hours to get them all working, and you're gonna post fire watch. Someone literally has to stand guard in this building to make sure no fire starts until you have all, you know? So we work with people. We give them, even when a unit technically fails, well, we don't ask people to move out. And you know Larry and Sam, in most cases, the city's giving you thirty days, um, fifteen, you know? Unless it's some sort of egregious, you know, no smoke detector, well, no CO detector. You got twenty-four hours for that one. And...
That's a safe, that's an absolute safety issue. That's not the same thing as a craft.
You know, I mean, it, it's not as the manager said, well, are any of these, um, issues that have been identified, are they overreaching? Are they not consistent with code? You know, I mean, my house wouldn't pass code. You know, I guarantee you. I mean, because I know in the hallway, because I broke it myself two months ago, I broke a, a, I was carrying a chair over Karen, and, and I broke an outlet cover. And it's broken, and I keep forgetting to go to Abishan's to get that outlet cover, it broke the corner off it. That would fail you, that would fail you in an inspection. That's code. But guess what? It's not in here, is it? There are so many code violations I could list for you that aren't gonna be in this document, that it would be almost impossible for the city to come up with a comprehensive checklist. And if we did, it would likely be three inches thick and people wouldn't like us very much.
Then the, then these should be the violations, and then the cracked light, light switch, that should be, you know, a list of things maybe to work on for the next inspection, that, you know?
But it's, well, we don't, we don't...
If it's truly not a safety issue, like a light switch.
We don't have toddlers in my home anymore. Um, I suspect if Alex and Miranda were two instead of thirty-two, Karen would be making, she would have made we replace it that day. Because a child could put their fingers on that cracked outlet cover and electrocute themselves. So, no, Sam, there are certain things that we need to give you thirty days to fix, because they, you know, is it likely that someone's going to get killed? No, but could it happen? You know, yes. So I, you know, and honestly, you know, people think that, that certain people get special treatment. Now, I get worse treatment. I can't tell you, I can't tell you how many times that, that the inspectors have walked into one, one of my buildings and said, well, if it was anybody else, it would be fine, but, uh, we don't want you. You know, and we try to be fair and impartial, and, and I'm, I'm proud of the inspectors, I'm proud of the team. I think they really do, they really do a good job. But, and Larry, it may, none of us like to get, you know, have a list of things that are technically violations. But in your case, you know, what did they give you? Thirty, thirty days, forty-five days?
Uh, I haven't, yeah, I haven't even done it yet. It's probably been sixty days.
I mean...
And I am not planning on doing a lot of them right off, because to me, they're minor. See, the thing is, Tom, there's, the whole program started.
You know what you said though, when you were explaining it to me? You said, you said, I had a panel that was uncovered. That's what you said. No, but that's what you said.
It wasn't labeled.
Oh, wasn't labeled. I thought you said uncovered.
The, the label identifying each circuit breaker wasn't, I mean, I had a board, but, but anyways. My tenants don't go down there. I, I just, I'll get to it. But there's, there's, the whole program when this started was because of habability issues. Meaning you had a toilet that's about ready to fall through the floor, or you got a hot water tank that's not working, you don't have hot water. Or you got water that's dripping out of the roof, um, or your heating appliance hasn't been serviced. Uh, they were habability issues. Now that's gone from, now we're gonna nitpick with minor defects. And you take a minor defect and you write on your report, failed in bold letters, violation. I'm sorry, Tom, I really have a big problem with that. Because they're making, uh, going back ten years, when my sister had a situation, she had some deplorable tenants she was trying to evict. And Rob and Matt went in there, did an inspection, and they got their big magnifying glass and they wrote her up for all kinds of stuff. Well, when we got to court, legal aid had a, had a field day with that. And a lot of, some of those things that were written up were not true. And I brought it up to Rob Stracken. He's an electrician, and I, I explained to him where, what he, which he wrote up my sister for wasn't, wasn't necessarily true. Um, but anyways, it's, all I'm asking the city to do, any inspectors, is just be reasonable. I mean, to write me up for some of the things that were met code ten years ago or twenty, uh, twenty-four years ago. I'm sorry, it's existing. Now, if I change, if I made a change to that device, I will bring it up to the present code. And I'm not talking about smoke detectors. I'm not saying that I'm gonna leave my, my ionization smoke detectors in when I know that those things are terrible. I've already changed them out to photoelectric. Because as you know, on Elm Street, there was seven people that lost their lives because of those ionization. And matter of fact, Berry City had a very good demonstration about what it took to get one of those smoke detectors to go off in the fish tank. I haven't seen it for a long time, but it's a very good demonstration. But again, it's, you know, these aren't new buildings, they're far from perfect. I mean, I think my buildings are pretty damn nice. Matter of fact, my tenants... I mean, I think my buildings are pretty damn nice. Matter of fact, my tenants love my, I don't have a problem renting them. I have, you know, wonderful tenants. I don't even have to advertise them. But I would invite all of you to come and look at my apartments and walk through it. And I'll ask you, is this a habitable apartment building or do you see a lot of violations? You know, I mean, some of them again, that I, I really need to have a conversation with Nick. One thing in particular I'm going to mention, in my closets, I got two-foot fluorescent tubes in the closet. Now, he said you can't have any exposed light bulbs. Okay, well, what about the four light bulbs above the vanity in the bathroom? Exposed light bulbs. So I can have those? So it's just, I'm not trying to be a bulb buster or be, you know, difficult. But I think it, you know, I mean, I, I just think there needs to be a little more common sense and, and being a little more reasonable. That's all.
Well, you know, your views, and listen, I'm, we've been talking about this a lot. It's clear that we're not going to reach any resolution this evening.
But actually, we're not talking about that.
Now I was talking, Counselor. But it, but you kept mentioning reasonable and, and then you said, well, it was fail in big red letters.
Yeah.
That probably didn't feel too good. But then one thing that you've also said, Larry, is that you haven't corrected all of the items on the list yet. Well, if Nick Copping was unreasonable, he would have been back in a week saying, Larry, move this tenant out. You got, you got seven days to correct these things. But you've even said that, you've said you're working on them. I think Nick Copping knows who you are. And when I say knows who you are, not like you intend to intimidate him or anything because you're not that kind of man. But he knows you to be a responsible landlord. He understands that, that you are a responsible person, that you do take pride in your properties. And that goes a long way with the department. I'm sure Nick, even though technically he failed you, he, he didn't start talking about enforcement. He didn't start talking about when he'd be back. He gave you a list and said, Larry, knock this list off before you, before you head out of town next.
But you did take care of that switch, by the way.
I, you know, and I'm, and I'm sure, and I'm sure you did. Because if it was, if it was, I've known you for decades and if it was a life safety issue, you'd be taking care of it. So, you know, I think the city is reasonable. Sam, to your point about consistency and, and some sort of baseline checklist, I think one thing that might be helpful is to have better communication between Nick and the landlords. And maybe make Nick available once a month for a landlord meeting so that he can say, hey, folks, we've had a number of failed units. This is what I'm seeing. This is the stuff that I'm seeing people get wrong. You know, we have that in my profession. It's called a peer review where literally, you know, the accountants actually get audited by other accountants and they look at the work that we produce and, and they'll say, okay, there was this FASB standard that you didn't apply. And we get newsletters every month saying, you know, a lot of people are missing this FASB standard. Federal Accounting Standards Board, whatever, but, but it helps us. Because as, so maybe that would be helpful for Nick to meet more frequently with the landlords and, and, and let you know, hey, you know, guys, there's a lot of people that round, one and a half inch round handrail, everybody's failing it because no one knows about it. So next time you're doing maintenance, you know, make sure you have a one and a half inch round handrail.
I was just down at the courthouse in Mop Hillier and I was at the sheriff's, I had to go over to the sheriff's department. And their handrail is a two-by, big old wide two-by-six. You know, it's a public building. So, you know, again, you know, this, it's existing, but. And I don't have a problem with improving it. Don't get me wrong, but I, I just, the problem I have is, is, you know, big bold letters, failed violation. And I shouldn't see those, see those words unless it is a serious issue.
Maybe we can speak with Nick about what the.
I think that's part of.
You know, it doesn't have to be S A I L. If it could be.
I think it's semantics, Mayor, if I may. I mean, it's, it's, it didn't meet a code. The term for that is failing. It's not that you're a failure as a person or as a landlord. You failed a code inspection, but it doesn't mean your house is terrible. So I, we had this, I'm sorry, but we had this discussion with the landlords and so I, I, it's a semantics thing, Larry. I mean, it's, I know that it hurts to see it in big red letters, but it doesn't make you any less of a landlord. It just means that you didn't meet this particular code at this particular moment in time, but you're still a good person and a good landlord. You just got to fix that. So I, I'd hate for Nick to change his whole process of how it goes about minor violations just because you felt hurt about seeing the word fail. It's, it happens to all of us. I mean, that little squiggly lines when we have a typo in word is like a big fail for me, right? So it's, it doesn't hurt me though. I just fix it and move on. So I.
I could do that, but it's, it's the point of the matter with me.
I, I get it. It hurts.
I feel like it's an interpretation issue. I really, for the 14 and a half years I've been a landlord in this city, my understanding and most of the other landlords that I've spoken to is that current building code is only what is used when you're pulling a permit, right? When you're pulling an electrical permit to upgrade your electric, that the new code is what is being, being inspected to, not for the existing rental units. That has always been the, my understanding and most people I know, they're understanding what this code means. And, and Nick is taking it to mean that every rental housing inspection is using current building code. Because of section 7.3, which says Vermont Fire and Building Safety Code adopted permits required. Of course, nobody's, nobody is arguing when you pull a permit, you need to come to current code. That is just the way it is regardless of which municipality you're in. But I, I don't think that, that the intent of this ordinance was that the rental housing is to be current building code. I don't believe that that was truly the intent of this ordinance.
Could I piggyback?
Yes, sir.
Um, so working in the trades, that's my understanding of code as well. If I'm working on some of the heating appliance, if it was installed to, if, if it was installed to code when it was installed, what, what, what that current code was, it's okay. Certainly, if there's an unsafe situation, you know, I talk to the property owner and say, I'm going to shut you down. I don't care what the code was. This needs to be, this needs to be remedied. And in that sense, you know, nothing against you, man, but a broken switch plate or missing switch plate, I see how that's, that's, that's an issue, even if it is minor and even if a tenant's down there. But when we're talking about, say, these, these handrails, you know, if, if the handrail was put in 50 years ago, I, I guess, and, and you're not making any substantial alterations, you're not replacing anything, you're not pulling a permit, you're just making repairs at, 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 at worst. That's my understanding. That's how I do my business. That's how I instruct my guys to do, to do their work. If, if, I guess I would like some clarification, maybe not right here, but at some point from the city, and like, and like you said, Sam, are you guys enforcing today's code? Are you forcing code to when things were installed? That's a big difference. And I feel like a lot of what is, is under contention here falls, falls under that. So that would be helpful, helpful for me personally. And frankly, I, I would appreciate it if Nick could address that when I'm doing work in the city as well. Because, you know, I don't want to run afoul of him either as a landlord or in my, or, or, you know, in my, in my, in my working day. So, thank you.
Yes.
No, I, we do a lot of renovations. It's what we do. And that is the way that we operate in every town that we have property in. Is when we're pulling permits, when we're doing work, it's up to the current code, not rental, not, you know.
And that's fair. Clarificate, that's an important clarification and we'll get you clarification.
I have a tenant that has been in the same unit for 31 years. I can't, I don't even know how many iterations of code there has been since he moved into that unit, right? It meets this, but it doesn't meet current building code, right? What do I do? Displace the tenant so I can completely rewire his unit? That's unreasonable.
Understood. And we need to get clarification on that. Anything else, Counsel? Any other questions? We'll figure out a path forward. We always do. And, you know, thanks for coming in.
And I, and I just must say.
You are responsible landlords. Guess the irresponsible ones don't show up in the city hall.
Right, they're not in the room, right? Those, and that's the, that's the frustrating part, right? Is that there's a handful of us in the room and we're not the problem. We know that. But we are being held to the same standard as if we were the, the problem. I don't know very many landlords that would have an issue if this is the form that was used by code enforcement so that everybody's on the same page. I really don't. Would you have a problem with this?
No, not at all.
And I. I, I don't.
It's very basic. That's what's.
I would have a problem with it, Sam, because it doesn't say a darn thing in here about a missing plate cover. Doesn't, you know, there's a lot it doesn't say. It, it's, I'm not saying it should be overly complicated. I'm not disagreeing with a lot of what was said. But it's not that simple either. You know, it, it can't be reduced to four or five pages so that the landlords who aren't responsible, when we say, well, you're missing a switch plate cover, they look and they say, well, it's not on your list, so I don't have to do it. So I, I wish it was that simple, Sam. It's complicated. Because, like I said, we have varying levels of responsibility amongst folks who provide housing in the city. You know what I know.
I absolutely know.
Yeah, so.
But I also know that it's pushing the good landlords to not want to be landlords in the city.
I understand. Okay. Well, yes.
I think, Counselor.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was a question.
Well, I was, I was going to ask if we had previously had a conversation about whether sending this to review by the city attorney would be the appropriate next step. So I was going to ask if, if we are considering that at this point.
I, as I understood it, Mr. Copping was going to be speaking to folks at the state in terms of how they enforce it so that we could get a better definition of, you know, what's, what is overheating? And, Colin, was it? I'm sorry. Yeah, you, you had a really good example about using, people using Renai heaters. And you said, you know, this definitely a temperature difference, but it's, and as I understood you were explaining it, it was economical. It was safe. You know, there's nothing dangerous about it. But you said, you know, there's definitely a temperature variance. Okay, is that a bad thing? You know, how much of a temperature variance? 15 degrees? That's probably a little excessive. Seven? That defines most houses in Berry, Vermont, whether it's a rental unit or a single family.
And frankly, too, you know, what time of year is this inspection happening? It's happening in September. It's like, there will be no temperature difference. If it's happening on, you know, the coldest day of the year, there's going to be some temperature difference. We're not even designing heating systems to heat the house perfectly on the coldest day of the year. That's, that's not how we're cold to, to, to design these systems. We're cold to design it to heat the 99% of the time, not 100% of the time. So I, I, again, I just think there's, there's just too much gray area there.
I understood. So that's what I thought we were going to do, Counselor. Like I said, this is going to be a little bit longer discussion. And, but I think it's important that the city council, listen, I think it's important that we could have good relationships with landlords. But I think it's, you know, I agree with you that it's important to have clear expectations, you know, so that you understand. But honestly, Sam, I.
Why are you shaking your head, Teddy? What is it that you want to see? And what is it that you think is not happening?
Well, we could, we could put a code book in front of you. But we don't even know if that code book is applicable. We haven't. If you give people an opportunity to answer the questions, we'll answer your questions. The most important question I heard today is, is it necessary that a building that was built in 1980 to code in, in every respect in 1980 and has been properly maintained in the city of Berry or anywhere, is that building built in 1980 expected to meet code 2024 code? That does not feel reasonable to me.
Right, but that is what Nick, and that's my point is that that is what.
Sam, I have said three times, we'll get you the answers. We're not getting them tonight.
Okay.
Okay. I appreciate you. I respect you, but sometimes you're impatient. Be a little patient. This is going to be a longer discussion. But, but what I also know is that Nick is not heavy-handed. He, he's, he's good at what he does and he understands when he is pointing out a violation to a landlord who is going to laugh at him when he walks out the door. Or landlords like the four of you, five of you, excuse me, Michelle, who are going to get to work on that list and who are going to get to work on it reasonably and who take their responsibility as a landlord seriously. So we'll get there. We're just not going to get there tonight.
And my point is, I, my, my flooded properties, I had full permits, I brought it up to code, I had zero, zero issue with the way that it was inspected. Nick came through, Arthur came through, the state came through, everybody came through, right? Current building code, I complied with every single thing, even if I thought it was stupid. I did it, right? Nick, do you agree with that?
Well, please don't. No, you direct your comments to the council. You always direct your comments to the council. That's all.
I did it all, right? I don't think there was anything that they asked me to do that I didn't do. That standard of new building code should not be held to the adjacent unit that didn't get touched. That's my point.
Understood. I understand. We will, we will get resolution. We will get there, just not tonight.
The, the only one thing that I want to point out though is if you want us to bring our buildings up to the present code, guess what's going to happen to the rent?
They're going to double.
They're going to go up. And, and, you know, we can't win. You know, we try to satisfy, bring our buildings up, we raise our rents and now we're greedy old landlords. You know, I just said, you know, to me, government is creating more problems than they're solving, especially when it comes to evictions. This is a problem. This is one of the biggest problems we have is the eviction process in this state, hands down.
I understand. We've had that discussion too, but we're not having that tonight either.
Could be better, could open up some housing if you gave landlords more, more rights.
I understand.
That's their biggest problem, but we don't need to go there. But anyways.
And there is a housing issue, right? It is also impossible to bring an occupied unit up to code, right? I mean, it's, it's not a four-hour fix to completely upgrade the electrical system in a unit.
It, I understand.
You know what I mean?
If that's what we're asking you to do. And, and I'm not aware that we are and if, I'm not aware that we are. So this is going to be a longer discussion. I hope you hang in there with us. We're going to, Nick is going to have some conversations with, with his counterparts at the state and try to get some answers about just the minimum. And again, the most important question I've heard is, do you have to bring a building built in 1970 to code up if it's not a life safety issue? I mean, there's some that are obviously smoke detectors, things like that, that are different types of issues. But just in terms of, you know, wiring, receptacles, panels, things like that, do you have to bring it up to code? We'll get that answer. We just won't have it tonight. So we're going to, we're going to move on now, okay?
Absolutely. And I have no issue with what they're doing.
I appreciate, it's okay and we appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, Counsel, upcoming business, I have been, we, we sort of, in the interest of not burning up staff time, we kind of relaxed our schedule a little bit. You know, I had been wanting us to meet to talk about housing and moving forward with different projects. But of course, we had the Vermont Emergency Management Grants and the EPA grant kind of looming, so we didn't get on that schedule. So I was just going to be emailing, just wanted to give you a fair warning. I was just going to be emailing you and, you know, thinking about getting back on that, those housing discussions, especially in the North End. We've done some good work through the grants that, that we're submitting. But I think it's important that we have more neighborhood meetings and start talking about what we're going to do in the North End to replace some of the housing that was lost. So that's all I have for upcoming business. I don't, I know this conversation will be ongoing. I don't know if any of you have anything else you'd like to see on the agenda. Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
So we had talked about water and sewer rates and I'd like to find out where we are with that because we, you said we were going to reach out to Berry Town, so I would like to follow up with that. And I would like to have a larg, larger, bigger discussion about winter parking. I think most people know how I feel about winter parking, but I'd like to have that discussion. So if we could put that on our calendars before it becomes winter, that would be helpful. And I would definitely be in favor of talking about housing. I think one thing that keeps coming up for me is if we do these fixes, how is that going to impact the things that we are saying we need to buy out today? So I want to have a bigger discussion about that because now is not the time for that. So, yes.
Counselor Stockwell?
I think Counselor Wallace's act was before me.
I was just going to ask for a quick review of what our upcoming meeting schedule is, or like.
I was just gonna ask for a quick review of what our upcoming meeting schedule is, or like-
I think we're in a-
Currently, we're still on our-
Every other week.
All right, but just with the special meetings and stuff, I'm off. So, we're not meeting on the third, but we will on the tenth.
That, that was, yeah, just to be clear, that was what I had. I don't, um-
Okay.
Yeah, we are not meeting, we are not meeting on the third.
Okay.
We wouldn't, we couldn't stand up an alternate schedule that quickly anyway. Wouldn't be reasonable. Counselor Stockwell?
I'd like to talk about the EPA grant. On the bottom of page seven, it says that the city is going to build and develop the infrastructure for Prospect Heights. And I would like some information about that, because that initially doesn't sound very good to me.
Uh, that's why we applied for a three million dollar and received a three million dollar-
I understand, but I would still like to see details, like what do we think it's gonna cost, what it's gonna look like, has a stormwater plan?
That's what we're doing right now. We'll have those answers.
And has there been an ecological survey? Not yet, right?
That's part, if you would, in the materials that have been submitted to counsel, um, that is part, that is the engineering that we have received the grant funds for. And the design of that and the cost estimate for that is part of that contract. So, in order, so before we can provide that information, it's not something that you draw on the back of a napkin. It's something that's engineered and it costs tens of thousands of dollars. We have applied for and received grant funds for that, so that is what's going to be developed over the next three to four months.
Okay, um, the other thing I'd like to talk about is a, um, the vacant commercial building ordinance. Other cities have a higher rate for, for commercial buildings, for fining them, for finding commercial buildings. So, I don't know if that's a good idea for Berry City, but I think it, you know, or some of them, you know, as you say, it's Main Street. Vacant buildings, vacant commercial structures on Main Street have a higher fine rate. So, it seems like that'd be worth exploring for us if we want to turn some things around on Main Street.
A higher, what rate? I'm sorry.
Rate of fines.
Rate of fines?
Yes, of fining them for being a vacant building.
For being vacant?
Yep.
So, oh, really? So, there's an office crisis. Everybody's working remote. So, you can be a commercial landlord who has an empty office space, who has a vacant office space, Class A office space. And, and a city would fine you because most people are working remotely, which incidentally is destroying Montpelier and slowly destroying Berry.
Yes.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. And, and we fine you more because you're trying hard.
Particularly, we look at buildings that we think are not, not well-maintained. I think there could be a not well-maintained part of that ordinance that would give us an ability to fine them at a higher rate.
Which would obviously, yeah. Okay. Uh, do you need an executive session?
Yes, for, uh, real estate.
Okay, well, we'll do roundtable first. Counselor Stockwell?
Um, I'll pass.
Counselor Spalding?
I have a couple of things. Uh, one is, I'm going to reiterate what Chair Michael Blutton said earlier. Please remember to vote. Um, the BUUSD budget is, um, all of, it has been approved by the board, the majority of the board. And information is at the BUUSD, uh, website. And, um, if you have questions, please reach out to the superintendent, um, because it's very important for everyone to get out to vote. Um, the other thing is a small request for, um, the deluge of documents we received in a very last-minute fashion. And I wonder if we could get them in a more timely fashion. It's hard to read all of those documents. So, I realize some of them are not, it's not possible, Lake River.
Right.
That, that just, it comes when it comes, but, um, getting the hundred and nine-page, um, ERPA, or not ERPA, I'm sorry, the-
EPA grant?
Yes.
You mean the one that-
I didn't even read it.
That we, that we were just asked for.
No, the EPA grant, I didn't even read. That didn't even rise up to the, the hazard mitigation. I read all of that. I didn't even read the EPA because it wasn't on the agenda and I thought, you know what, I, I'm gonna have to, you know, use my time wisely here. So, um, just if we could, if, and I realize when you're getting it, you're getting it and you're sending it out.
That's usually what's happening, yeah.
And so, I appreciate that, but I just, I think it's hard to be able to, to speak to things if we haven't had a chance to read them thoroughly. So, thank you for that.
Counselor Wazzaq.
I've shown a remarkable constraint. I'll continue that. I'll pass.
Counselor Gustin?
Pass.
Counselor Deering?
School starts tomorrow, so, uh, just wanna remind people as the transportation coordinator for BCMS to be safe out there when I have my buses out there. And also, uh, have fun, be careful, be safe. But just know the kids are going back to school tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Uh, counsel, we need an executive session to discuss real estate.
Real estate.
Do you have a legal?
No, legal. Uh, no, no, that was last night, yeah.
Real estate matter under executive session. We'll need a motion for findings, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Uh, all those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and we will need a motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
I was gonna invite Michael for old times.
It was moved by Counselor Stockwell. It was seconded by Counselor Wazzaq. And I can guarantee you that the motion to come out of executive session and the motion to, uh, adjourn will be made by Counselor Stockwell and seconded by Counselor Wazzaq respectfully.
Okay.
Sold.
So, I finally figured out how to solve that problem. Madam Clerk?
Start with the little things.
Did we make-
So, Nicholas, what we could do here-
Did we make a motion to go away to executive session?
Yes, to vote. We could just mute it and turn off the video.
We have, have, have we voted on the motion to go on executive session yet? The motion is on, is made and seconded.
Right.
They're not having a vote.
On favor, aye, aye.
Aye.